Okay, I'd like to call the October 22nd, 2024 Border Selectments meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. Mr. Pinio, do we have need for non-public?
Madam Chairperson, we do not.
Okay, we don't have any minutes, don't have a public hearing, no bulk vote, no boards or committees, the first item under new business, budget review, first is Public Works.
Okay, so we're going to kick off in the Public Works Administration, which when you open your book, it's under the Public Works tab. This budget, when you look at it, you will see that the overall budget has an 87% increase of $147,902. I want to go back through a little bit of history here for you. This particular line used to be called Public Works Administration, and it was that way when we had our town engineer onboard. In that town engineer's budget, it was broken out so that the administrative assistant with it within this budget, and I believe it was 60% of the town engineer was in this budget, and the balance of the town engineer's salary was in the water and sewer departments. That individual left, we moved forward, we reclassified this particular budget as town engineer. Our hopes were to hire a town engineer. As you know, we've been having significant troubles attracting a town engineer. Steve Randall also during this timeframe has taken the reins of the Director of Public Works and hence handled it quite well. With that said, if you recall last year's budget, Steve's salary was broken out in the four divisions of Streets and Highway, Public Works Garage, Solid Waste, and Buildings and Grounds, based on a percentage of those salaries compared to Steve's salary. One of the things that we've had a lot of issue with breaking employees out this way is if for some reason the data entry is entered into the payroll system incorrectly, it shows it all being attributed to a single line item, and another line item may not be hit for that budget. And we get midway through the year, and it's recognized, we have a problem here because this salary line is not being hit. So what we have done, if you recall, about three months ago, we slightly reorganized the department, and we created the director. And under the director, we have two operations managers, operations managers, excuse me. We have one operations manager who oversees the general fund budgets, which is the Public Works Garage, Streets and Highway, Solid Waste, Buildings and Grounds. We have another operations manager who sees the divisions of Water and Sewer. So as we've built this budget, we have taken some of the advice of the Budget Committee in the past related to specifically Steve Randall's salary. And when you look at this, you're going to see all of Steve Randall's salaries incorporated into the supervisory salary line. On the back end of this, what we're doing is we're making adjustments to the administrative allocation to Water and Sewer so that the general fund salaries will reflect the full, fully loaded employee. However, the administrative allocation for the Water Department will increase by 25% of Steve Randall's fully loaded salary, and the same thing in the Sewer Department. So when you see the administrative allocations, that's where the money is being made up. And that was partially at the recommendation previously of the Budget Committee, who said we'd like to be able to see some of these absorbed as the administrative allocations. So when you look at these budgets, yes, we've gone back to Public Works Administration as a title. Yes, we've fully loaded the employee here. So yes, you see a fairly significant increase in these lines. I hope that that paints a picture of why this particular budget looks larger than it has previously. With that said, I can try to answer any questions you may have, and Casey would be able to back me up, I do believe.
Okay, we will start with the 100 series. Anybody have any questions and concerns in the 100 series? I think Jim has really kind of explained that.
Yep.
The 200 series, the 300 series, the 400 series, the 500 series. There is a significant increase in printing. Is there any reason for that?
Sure, Steve Randall, Director of Public Works. In going with what Jim had said, we used to split all of my things over four or five different budgets. We've tried to collapse those down in to some extent, plus we are increasing pricing. So this should fall in line more with what we actually spend.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Not sure I understand your answer. So let's just take the entire 500, just the 500 series. Advertising, year-to-date spent $540,000. Next year's budget $4,000, 2024 budget $2,000. So help me with that again, why is the double?
Because we're trying to reduce it out of the other budgets. So before I didn't, I'm going to say I didn't have access to this budget per se, it wasn't mine. Mine was split over Streets and Highways and all of those. So those numbers will start to go down in the other budgets as this one went up. So this is more for true advertising on, every time we have to advertise for bidding for public notices, any of those things.
So you're just parking all that stuff in Public Works Administration?
Correct.
And just a backup question, Jim mentioned the administrative allocation. The formula hasn't changed, is where you're putting the money has changed? Is the allocation formula hasn't changed, right?
It changed a little bit as, oh, sorry. The town engineer was 60% general fund and 20% water and 20% sewer. His salary is, because he's doing more work for water and sewer, is 50% general fund, 25 for water, 25 for sewer. So in theory, it hasn't changed, the numbers have changed.
But at the, I don't even know if I know how to ask the question. At the water and sewer level, year over year, the allocation hasn't changed?
It's about the same.
It's about the same, I got it.
But I thought it did change because we used, in 2024, we did not allocate the town engineer or that supervisory through the administrative. We did it as a line item in the budget under salary. So that will change because that will now have to be added to Water and Sewer.
I stand corrected. I was more answering in that water really isn't impacted any differently the way we're accounting for it. She is correct, admin allocation will go up a little bit versus an automatic line item transfer. Every week when we did payroll, we'd have to split somebody three, four ways. That's what we've stopped doing. We put it in one line item in the budget.
So is, and just maybe for tomorrow, is admin allocation across all enterprise funds going up or just here?
Just Water and Sewer.
Got it, thank you.
And stand corrected, I don't have some of the data from the tax collector at this point, so I'm trying to get it to you tomorrow. I can have a draft view tomorrow to see some of that, but I'm still waiting for some data from that office.
Okay, got it, thanks Linda.
Okay, any other questions with the 500 series? The 600 series? And I'm assuming on 620, that increase is the same reason as all the others up above?
Correct.
Thank you.
800 series? Okay, any other questions in the Public Work Administration? If not, we'll go over to Highways?
Okay, so your Highway and Streets budget, this particular budget, understand there's minimal adjustment at this point for wages. We're currently in negotiations with the collective bargaining units, so the wage adjustments will be as a standalone warrant article. With that said, this overall budget is up 14.8% or $220,964. That is a significant increase. However, when you take and you look at what the proposed budget was for 2024, and then you compare it side by side of this budget, the increase is, I don't have the percentage in front of me right at this moment, but it's obviously not as impactful. The other thing that I would sit here and say about this budget is, last year at the deliberative session, we heard loud and clear from the citizens that we need to do a better job at taking care of our roads. I think Steve has built a budget that will help us take care of our roads a little bit better as far as treatment and road maintenance. So it's yours to go through, and Steve can answer any questions you have.
Okay, we'll start with the 100 series.
Yes, Linda?
Yep.
Just wondering, Steve, oh, and first of all, any of these questions I ask are just financial questions. None of them are an attack on you or your department.
You're good.
For overtime, what services use up most of our overtime? Do you know?
Winter service would be by far, plowing and sanding, yep, 100%. You know, throughout the course of the summer, we have very minimal. Maybe we run late trying to do a road crossing in a culvert. We're not going to stop halfway through, so we might get hour or two here or there. But it's 100% winter.
So winter or summer rainstorms?
Yes, yeah, emergencies.
All right.
Anybody else in the 100 series? 200 series? 300 series? And I'd like to look at 380, outside services. And this one looks like it's what mainly we asked for in 2024, but we spent a lot this year on this line. So can you kind of explain where we are here?
Sure, so a lot of this is continuing. So for instance, catch basin cleaning, that's a yearly, it's a yearly fee. So that happens all the time. Road striping, I did not do this year because we did have to cut back on some, and we were also doing a fair amount of paving on, say Pleasant Valley Road, for example. We weren't going to stripe it in the spring and then turn around and pave over it. So some of that, I hedge my bets on. Roadside tree removal, guardrails, beavers, all those things are yearly. They're not a one-time deal.
So, but you spent $165,000 this year. Was there something specific in this outside services that hit last year that you're not accounting for, not using?
Oh, I understand what you're saying. So we actually spent more on catch basin this year than this. We had, between all the washouts and things that we had last fall, we had a fair amount more to clean than anticipated.
Linda, that was going to be a question there. So inside of this particular budget, spending money on catch basins is both prevention as well as it broke, we got to fix it?
Correct.
Okay. Here's just something to think about, and you probably can't do it here. I don't know yet. If you take, you said for all the money we appropriate across your department and others, what work actually is getting done? You know, list it out.
I guess I need more clarification on the question, because we do a lot of work.
How many catch basins are we going to be doing in 2025? How many miles of road are we going to pave? How many, and we can't do how many snowstorms because, you know, we have no clue. But what I think would be, at least for me, and if you guys think it's a bad idea that you run your business, I think that these are, I'm sure you can justify every number on the page, every one of them, to a level of detail which is probably eye-glazing. But I think what people really want to understand is what are you going to get done? How does it get done? When's it going to get done? And how do we know it's getting done? I think that, you know, Brian talks about the people he talked to. That's what I hear when I talk to people is, where's my road? What's going on? And so I think just park that in your mind, and maybe, you know, park that in a, you know, KPIs, dashboards, whatever you want to do, but I just think that's important.
So to some extent, I can answer that easily. As far as this goes, I can, whether it be maintenance plans or things like that. As far as road paving and that kind of goes, I can't answer that until...
The warrants are done.
Until the warrants are done, and the warrants are voted on. So what I have done in the past and what I will do now is, when we get to that step, I have a list of what I want to do. So this is my list. So if I knew, you know, if we were like a year in advance, for lack of a better word, then I could tell you exactly what I was going to do next summer now, but I won't know until March.
But also, but also don't you use our surface management?
Yes, 100%.
Asset management plan, so it's based on a document?
Correct, everything is based on that.
We just want to, at least me personally, I just want them to see it.
Yep, and again, that's the, you know, we have an open door down there, and there's always, I, you know, talk to whoever can ask, but short of when I come up here and I give you my updates and what our plans are for next year, or what I'm hopeful to do for next year based on what we have for numbers.
Anything else in the 300 series? The 400 series?
Streetlights.
Vehicle maintenance.
Well, I'm going to start with streetlights.
Well, which one's going to start first?
He's first.
He's first.
409.
Your second, okay.
Formula 409.
Why are the streetlights significantly less spent this year than any other year? Just curious.
It's the electric bill. I, it's the electric bill. So as the bill comes through, we pay it, whether it be come through in different quarters, I believe.
If I may too, as I, if I say monthly, they were a little bit behind on the reports. This is only through September, so it's probably only August data, so it's a little bit dated.
Okay, so it's about half the year.
And they were behind on the billing with the software. So that is probably the reasoning behind it.
So the answer is the usage is the same, similarly, whatever. It's just that we haven't got a piece of paper that says, here's how much money you owe me for the...
Correct.
Because, you know, the software conversion that Casey's been talking about.
Correct.
Got it, thank you. So the one I want to poke at is the 155 for vehicle maintenance.
Sure.
Big jump over 24 actuals, and it's a big jump over 24 budget.
So again, the 24 budget, proposed budget was 155, they carried that number through. The 23 actuals was 188. We are actually just getting into, it's usually November, December, January, February is what hits us the hardest for breakdowns. I expect where you're at at 108, we will blow past the 135 before the end of the year.
Okay.
How about 490 drainage pipes and structures? Have they gone up significantly, or is this just catching up from what we didn't get last year?
Well, it's both. So the budget of 23,000 was actually the number that was floated in this time in '22. So I proposed 45,000, I believe, last year. So there's a twofold issue. One, the price of culverts has gone up drastically since '22, and the size of culverts that we need to put in now versus what was done two, three years ago. So it's a twofold issue. For example, just through, the drainage that we replaced on Beach Pond Road was 56,000 just for that run, so in one project.
Yeah, that's what I assume, that when you're doing repairs, instead of patching now, you're replacing.
Correct.
Yeah. My question is, for rentals and leases, any equipment purchases needed?
So the big one for me that I floated during CIP is the roller. And we have an active setup with the roller. I don't know where we're at with that at the moment, but the roller is the big thing for us. We rent it five to six months a year, so...
So that's for the gravel roads as well as for paving?
Nothing to do with paving.
Just for the gravel roads?
Just maintaining gravel roads. So even if we're not rebuilding any roads, just, you know, we grade three times a year. We need to roll them.
Here's a Paul question, how many miles of gravel roads?
17.
I knew he knew that one. So you'll give us a cost-benefit analysis coming forward that will say, if we buy, it will be beneficial for us in so much time?
So I have it, I presented that during CIP with a full program of a lease purchase on a roller. So I put that in for CIP for this coming.
I think the reason he's asking the question is long ago and far away, my colleague over here, I think it was like $4,100 bucks a day or something to rent a roller. It was a big number.
$4,000 a month.
A month, all right, I thought it was a day, whatever, 4,000 a month.
I wanted to do work for you.
So am I correct in hearing that you and your capital reserve fund is going to do a roller?
It's not in a capital reserve fund, it was straight in CIP. What I proposed to do was to pay for a lease out of this budget, because that's what I'm doing with it now when I rent it. I just want to be able to lease it and keep it instead of sending it back every fall.
Okay, so this in here is going to be a lease, and we'll own it at the end of the lease?
If everything is all...
It's a capital lease?
So yes, the takeaway is we have to have conversations about this going forward. And those conversations are, should we put out a warrant article? And the reason I say a warrant article is, this is an expansion of the existing fleet that we've had. Tried to be a practice, anytime we expand the existing fleet from where we are currently with a new piece of capital equipment, we bring it to the voters and ask for it. So in this budget, he has $12,000 allocated for the roller. We have to figure out how that works going forward. If we bring forward the warrant article for a lease purchase of the roller in 2025, if we bring the lease forward and it passes, we can use this money to offset if the budget passes. If we bring it forward and it fails, but the budget passes, we've at least got the money in the budget for the lease. So there's logistic items that have to be worked out on it to get it figured out. It's similar to what we did with the mini excavator.
But setting all that aside, four grand a month, 48 grand a year. How much is a new roller?
120.
120, that's a lot of 48 grands.
So I have a...
That's a Gesinda problem, you know, 48 Gesinda, 120, how many times? It's a lot.
So it's a three-year break even?
No, it's cash out the door, yeah, that's right, three years.
Based on, the other thing would be based on?
Maintenance.
Maintenance and its expected life. What are those two figures?
Expected life, yeah.
Yep, the expected life on a roller would be 15 or 20.
Whatever, I mean, that's part of the analysis.
And we can do most of the maintenance on it in-house?
Yes.
There you go.
And this is for 13, 14 miles of gravel roads?
17.
17.
17. That's one to poke at.
Any more in the 400 series? 500 series? 600 series?
Okay, so now I'm not a nice guy. I would love for you to have a roller, but I would like to see in the whole 600 series, if we could cut that down by 70 to 90,000 dollars.
Why?
Why, or?
Because then that would bring the street and road budget down to only a 10% increase for the year, which I know you can't, but I would like to see how hard you could try.
So I will tell you the 600 series is the one that gets anything done in town.
I know.
So that's the one that produces the work. You know, if you're asking me to throw out a number, I'm going to tell you, no. I don't want to cut my snow and salt, you know, because, yeah, last winter was somewhat easy. We got pummeled in the spring. And if I don't have the money for the gravel roads to put anything on the maintenance that are already behind, you know...
Just looking through your whole budget.
Sure, if you, you know, again, if you're asking me, I'm going to tell you, no, we cut that money, we cut the service, so...
Or is there a need to cut the general fund by that amount of money?
You know, if you want to cut it, I would, my suggestion is just cut the money. And I have to make it work, but...
As I looked at this, a lot of the prices you're asking for this year was what you asked for last year?
I didn't change them.
Didn't change them, so these are 2024 asked. We couldn't do it, so we're asking again 2025.
Correct.
So he has an increase.
Where do you see that?
Is asked from what he asked for in 2024.
Where do you see that? In the 600 series?
I went through, and when I saw what was in the 2024 budget listed, is the same that's listed, and it's the same figure.
May I help? You cannot see it there, she's gone back to her old budget book, because what you see there is default. She compared it to last year's book. She's comparing it to what he asked for, not what he was given.
Right?
Two observations, one, you were sandbagging, which we don't believe. And two, is you've done a great job tightening things up, which I tend to believe.
Well, I can't...
Until you prove me wrong.
Well, I can't overspend, Paul, so if you give me 10 bucks, I'm going to spend 10 bucks. I want 20, but I will spend 10 because that's what we have.
He's going to ask for 11, yeah.
Yeah, he's going to ask for 11, you know.
This is the last year he doesn't ask for it.
Because just looking at your budget, I said, that's the only place where I can see that something could be shaved.
But if you look at the, I mean...
Okay, Paul.
Nice pen. And it's outside of this conversation, but I asked the other night of another department head, and I hope, you know, the town manager and all of you people do this. We need to know, I personally would like to know, and I think the voters would want to know. If you don't want to do it, fine by you. I want to know where you want to invest more. I want to know where you want to slow down. I want to know where you want to stop. And if that says that the budget requirement is bigger than what you have, the same as what you have, all I want to hear from you is that answer. And the difficulty is, it puts our town manager in a situation where he has to arbitrage between departments. I'd like to know whether you think you're investing enough, whether you're not, or whether you're pausing. That's, I think, what my responsibility is.
So as we sit here right now, I'm very comfortable with this budget. This is a workable budget for us as far as what we can get accomplished in the amount of time that we have, the manpower we have, the equipment we have, and the time we have. This is a comfortable, good budget that will get us going in the right direction.
Do we want him to be comfortable?
Well, that's a truthful answer.
Yeah, just to, want to keep in mind too here, historically, the Public Works has garnered the most support of all when there's warrant articles out there and support for the maintenance and continuing work done on the roads. And a prime example of that is last year, is much scrutiny that went on in the budget during the deliberative session there of cutting and cutting, and we all know the result, that it ended up in default. But during that whole process there, the Public Works budget had an amount added back into it during that process there. So the townspeople want to see us maintain the roads to the standard that we have been doing. I think it tells me that they're very happy with that work and the progress that we've been making. So I would be very uncomfortable, I wouldn't support doing any cuts, just especially a random cut, taking off, you know, $50,000, $60,000 just to make a line item look at 10% instead of 17% or something like that. I think these numbers, as Linda pointed out, I didn't go back and look at last year's actuals, the ask from last year, but, you know, hearing that comment there was, tells me that... But, you know, hearing that comment there was, tells me that, you know, we're not asking for more than what we asked for last year. We just want to get to that level that we wanted to be at last year, so.
So, I do have that right in front of me and I can go through it really quickly. The six-ten line in last year's budget was an increase of eighty-five hundred dollars. Six-twenty was an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars. Six-thirty was an increase of thirty-six thousand dollars. Six-thirty-three was an increase of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. Six-thirty-four was an increase of thirty-five thousand. Six-thirty-five last year was a decrease of fourteen hundred. Six-thirty-six was a decrease of thirty-nine hundred, six hundred. Uh, six-thirty-eight was a decrease of four twenty. And six-eighty was a decrease of four thousand five hundred dollars.
Safety equipment.
Uh, and then uniforms was broken out, if you recall, and that was a new line item for twelve thousand three hundred. So, the numbers that Steve has in the twenty-twenty-five proposed budgets exactly match what was in the twenty-twenty-four proposed budgets, and those were the increases, decreases from the previous twenty-twenty-three budget.
Can you see where, as I recall, you had made some cuts to these in the book that I had?
I think at the capital side, wasn't it, at the warrant side maybe?
Along the line, in my book, maybe it wasn't here, but you also had gone through these budgets and made.
Last year, yes.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, last year. So, I didn't, my first question, I'm saying, he didn't cut anything, which was part of what drew me to go back to two thousand and twenty-four. And I could see that he made the cuts in two thousand and twenty-four. So, these have already been cut by the, the town manager. And I'm with Brad, I, I think the public wants the roads maintained, they're tired of driving on roads that aren't.
And I'll be honest with you, that's what I did, is I pulled up my twenty-twenty-four proposed budget and checked it and basically submitted the same thing. You know, when I, that was my first year of actually building the budget. So, the one, the default that we're working off of was the one that I inherited the end of twenty-two into twenty-three. So, twenty-three was tracked, budgeted, proposed for twenty-four, and, and this is what we're carrying through.
So, I, I have a question. How much did the, in the deliberative session, was it one hundred thousand or two hundred thousand?
Two hundred.
It was two hundred thousand that was added to the.
Right, yes.
To the budget.
It was a deuce, right?
So.
It was added to your road.
Road warrant.
Road warrant.
Warrant article.
And I'm, and I am proposing again, when we went through this a little while ago, is I'm carrying the same number, I'm carrying the same road number that I carried last year. I, I feel that that is a good number for the town to get, to be able to make progress towards getting our roads fixed without, you know, we could spend twenty million dollars on roads, hundred percent. We can't afford to spend twenty million. So, from, my job is to pay attention to what I, what we need to do the work, plus what is gonna work. And nine hundred for roads is a good number.
So, are we comfortable as a board with these numbers and with that warrant article? Especially, what if at the deliberative session, we get the community to kick it up two hundred thousand dollars? Again, it's their prerogative and they can.
Paul?
So, I, you know, I can't, Brian, I can't speculate on what could happen at the deliberative. What I, what I believe, and I think Brad, you know, said it, is this is, this is the core of our town. We gotta get this right. Roads, sidewalks, public safety, those things are the core. And if we don't, and, and it's very visible. And, and I think what, you know, the challenge is for all of you folks is more clarity about what you're gonna do, and then you do it. And at least for me, being an outsider for the past couple of years, and I'm not throwing a rock here, as I would sit and watch TV, I wasn't getting a lot of, I wasn't getting a lot of clarity. And it's not just, you know, it was just a lot of, you know, we're working hard and we're doing good. That, that to me is, that doesn't fly. So, I, I would encourage you to be a little more clearer-ish.
Sure.
You know, okay? And, and now I do have an unrelated question, but related. So, you, you worked on a lot of explosive culverts and things this year, things that just, and last year too. And you're continuing to work on those.
Yes.
So, in another session, which we haven't had yet, there's gonna be a, a bid put out there. When I say a bid, there's, there's an activity that might get spun up to look at how phosphorus is running off from roads and properties that enter streams and then flow into the lakes. And I, I don't know how this is gonna work, but there's a, I think the waters team is looking at, you know, kind of doing a diagnostic on some of that stuff, which sounds like the right thing to do. Are you involved in any of that, or will you be involved in that?
I will be, and, and I kind of have to some extent. We've, we've worked on Whitegate, we've worked on Port Wedland. So, I don't know to the extent that you're asking, but, you know.
I'm just asking if there's a connection there, you know, and I, you know, I went up, I went up Stoddard and those places after the explosion and, and, I should, bad word, after, and, and Beach Pond Road, and all that stuff's finding its way into a water body. And I'm just wondering if there's residual activity to look at some of that stuff.
Well, I, you might be able to answer that, probably.
I send Wolfboro Waters material and agenda to Public Works and to the town manager.
Good.
So, he knows exactly, we have talked to him, and he has come to Wolfboro Waters when Wolfboro Waters has a question or dealing with something. So, Wolfboro Waters works with Public Works because, you're right, drainage and how the water gets to our lakes is important.
We just want to stitch all that together, and I apologize if I didn't know. I just want to make sure there's, you know, connections here that are important.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but my sense of topics come up. Haven't you changed the way or the type of product that you put down for when you're treating the road that is of benefit compared to the sand that we used to use?
The salt that we used to use. We've cut our salt by, I think we're, last year we're at the fifty percent mark. I'm trying to get to a sixty percent reduction. My first year was forty, we got to fifty. My goal is, is to cut another ten percent.
Yeah, and you can see that when it goes on the road. And the other thing, Wolfboro Waters, when Steve went for a grant for the drainage.
Yes.
Which is very significant. We got letters to back up the need for that in the community, so I think we are weaving that together.
So, how are we going to use this budget, these funds, and the information from Wolfboro Waters? And when we hit projects like Port Wedland and Whitegate, get those projects over the finish line?
So, if I might, uh, two, two things real quick. One, Jim just reminded me, is on the dirt roads, we also switched to pea stone. So, pea stone.
Pea stones.
So, we use, we use small stone on the dirt roads. And then I'd like to back up for a second, and this ties into what you just asked. So, from my perspective, what you're asking about is two different things, is two different budgets. The road monies and the project monies that are warrant articles tied to Wolfboro Waters, whether it be Whitegate, whether it be, you know, paving Pleasant Valley Road or whatever. This is the maintenance budget. So, we don't pave roads with this, we patch roads with this. We don't build roads with this, we fix roads with this. So, we don't do drainage projects with this, we do replacement projects with this. So, for us, there's a very distinct difference in that. So, by saying, well, what happens if we go up two hundred in the warrant versus this? These monies don't intermingle, they are very specific for specific reasons. So, I don't view it as, you know, if this is one point seven million, you give me another one point one. Hey, I got three million, you know, whatever, you know, two point eight, it doesn't work that way. I have one point seven to do my maintenance, which is what the highway department is designed to be, is a maintenance facility. We maintain. The other stuff are projects, and that's what projects are set up to be. That's why, you know, Allstate is doing our paving, that's why Dawson is doing a water main, and you don't see the town doing those things. Beach Pond was a maintenance problem. We fixed it. So, there's two very distinct differences there.
Yes, Brad?
Just to clarify one, add a little bit more explanation of what I think Steve said, I don't know if everybody understood this part. We talked about using the pea stone, the pea gravel on dirt roads. Talking about in the wintertime, putting it on the ice instead of sand on the, on the roads. I don't, I don't know if.
Sorry, I should have, I should have expanded on that a little bit.
That would, that would keep the silt and the finesse of the sand of migrating into the ditch lines out through the culverts and down into the water bodies.
And it also rebuilds, helps to rebuild the backbone of the road.
Yep.
Yeah, Julie Brown came before us and said that gravel roads actually have a more detrimental effect on the environment than asphalt roads.
Hundred percent. And, and I think that's a, I would think most people understand the concept as to why. You know, you just can't, you have to work within the, the reality of paving seventeen miles of, of road. As Linda and I have talked, I'm all for it, but there's, there's also being realistic too.
Anymore?
Well done, Steve.
I have one question on six thirty-eight, and it's the price, the cost, and it's a dollar twenty-nine. When I looked in the material that was handed out, it was one forty-nine. I didn't know whether this was in a canister, why that would be, where that price came from. Because when I looked in the sheets, it was one forty-nine.
That is the budget number that we just punched through, that comes through off the projected gallons and pounds or how we want to look at it, that it comes out at.
Okay, because when I looked at it.
We, we take it as an action item at the end of this process, probably after we've given it to the budget committee to look at propane, diesel, and gasoline, to make sure they're all using the same rates and that we have budgeted correctly.
Okay, so they're all, that's all gonna be done by your administration at some point?
Yeah, Jim and, Jim and I tackled that for the last couple of years. And it's funny you were asking, because I was just looking at the highs and lows for gas and diesel, and I hadn't got to propane yet, but that is something we would be, it's on our follow-up list, and it'll be on your revisit list.
Okay, all right. Um, seven hundred series? Eight hundred series? Anything else in highways and streets? Let's go on.
Next budget is bridges. If you recall, last year, we created, we, we received some state monies. As a result of receiving those state grant monies, we created the department for maintaining our bridges. And this is going forward. We, we try to maintain our bridges in a manner that is consistent with best practices, and they're significant investments in our communities, and we need to maintain them. Steve can answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions on bridges? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Public Works Garage.
So, the Public Works Garage, you'll actually see a slight reduction here. Eight, uh, four thousand one hundred and ninety-six, or one point six percent. Part of this is because of the director's position funds coming out, so there are some actual increases within the budget. But Steve will be able to speak to them as you go through the budget.
Okay, the one hundred series? Two hundred series? Three hundred series? And I have one on three thirty-two. Are the, the vehicle maintenance now showing up in individual budgets? Because that's a.
That's, that's the, the revolving line. So, Public Works Garage buys everything out of that line and then, and then invoices each individual department. So, that number always, that number isn't real, it's just a money in, money out line.
So, that number that we see actual is not actual. It will then go out to all the other budgets, that's why that number will stay consistent between twenty-four and twenty-five.
On a monthly basis, we, we allocate out to every department that has used any of the garage services. But what also that is, is some of what I call his inventory. If he went out and bought tires, and there's four tires on the shelf, nobody's used them yet. So, at the end of the year, we could have some inventory in the garage.
Is that, is that inventory what you think is a twenty-three thousand, two hundred?
I'm sorry, I took my glasses.
It's staying at the, it's part of the garage, that's the garage.
That's kind of the baseline number of what he holds.
Yeah, and at the end of the year, he, he does go around and counts everything, not the little things, but the big things, and we'll put that into inventory to be crossed out in a later date. But yes, every month, we are cross-charging the departments.
Casey? And so, the cross-charge is a buck spent, a buck cross-charge, right?
Correct.
That's except for labor. Labor is one person or two people, excuse me, stays in, in Public Works, but it's for any, any pieces, parts, and equipment.
Okay, got it. My, my question was, you're not, you're not in business to cross-charge and get a loan?
No, they won't let me.
I wouldn't allow that.
Good for you.
It's not for lack of trying.
Good for you.
Okay, four hundred series? And I'm assuming that the water will be with our other water revisions? I won't say that again tonight.
If, if you'd like, you can continue to say it, but between Amy and I, we're gonna run reports at the end of this whole process for all water, sewer, and electricity to make sure our utilities are in line with what they should be.
Okay. All righty. So, anybody else in four hundred? Five hundred? Six hundred? Seven hundred? Eight hundred?
Okay, so your next budget is buildings and grounds. Buildings and grounds budget is up ten thousand three dollars, or four point eight percent.
Okay, we'll start with the one hundred series. All right, uh, two hundred series? Three hundred series? You want to talk about outside services?
I just want to, I just want you to touch on it, what's in there? I know it's in the backup.
So, outside services for buildings and grounds, that's what pays for the cleaning of dockside railroad stations, mowing at the library. All, yeah, all of our cleaning facilities that, that we pay, that's the majority of what that money is for. Janitorial services, mowing.
While we're here, is there gonna be any kind of general maintenance that we should know about on the dockside parking lot area or on the train station building and the chamber building?
So, every year, we, we pressure wash them and we clean them. You know, we did the, we did the, we painted dockside last year. We did the, the deck on the train station last year, and we're constantly in, working on the bathrooms.
I would also say around the January, February timeframe, we're gonna be coming to you to be able to leverage some capital reserve funds from the building maintenance. The chamber has asked for.
Right.
The carpet to be replaced, and the, I think the floor in the middle section needs to be done. So, we're gonna be getting pricing in that in the December timeframe and coming to you in January.
You say the floor in the middle section, you're talking about the.
Chamber building.
Where the rental facilities are?
Any, um, any work going to be done on the MED building or the community center building?
Those aren't under buildings and grounds.
Those are just under Parks and Rec?
Or, or Berry.
Or Berry, yeah.
I have three eleven engineering boat ram back bay docks. I think that was in last year's budget, we just didn't get to it.
We didn't do, when we, when we reduced the numbers down, we didn't do it.
This went out, so it's the same thing. And the back bay docks are in real need of something, let me tell you that.
Can I follow up on that one? So, is this just to tell us how much it's gonna cost us if we decide to fix it, or are we actually gonna do something?
So, in order to do.
That's an indelicate question.
It is, and I can give you a, I'll give you a delicate answer.
Give me a delicate answer.
So, we can't just go and rip a dock apart and build it? So, I have to have permits?
Because you got a D E P issue, you gotta figure out what to do.
So, that's what this is for.
So, this is to get, this is to get.
All of our docks in a row.
So, the D E P can say, yeah, your plan makes sense.
Correct.
So, for the people who look at this and say, where docks are gonna get fixed in the back, they're not.
They're not gonna get, no. We're gonna get, we're gonna get the permits, that, that takes some time. So, if this gets approved in March, we start, we'll get it all teed up, we'll come back to you for next year so we can do a dock project in twenty-six.
And it wasn't meant to be an indelicate question to you.
That's fine.
You know, just for clarity, we do, we, we want to make sure we're clear that when we say we're gonna do something, we're either gonna plan, or we're gonna do, and this is a plan.
The majority of the things that we do is in us. We have to plan, we can't just do it because we need permits.
Sure, click.
But this was one of the things we lost in the two, in the default budget. We were trying to get it done, so we weren't able to.
And that would go out forbidden, and a dock company will be building them, we won't be building them, correct?
Correct, we do not do dock construction.
Okay, four hundred series?
So, in the four hundred series, just if I could, Linda?
Yeah?
General question, so the other night, Parks and Rec. So the other night, Parks and Rec said, I remember last year, as I watched TV, there was a, you know, I need a tractor, I need to remove snow, and it went back and forth and back and forth, and nothing...it didn't see the light of day. But somehow, that whole snow removal thing got worked out. Is that creating upward pressure on your budget for this coming year? Or is everything cool? Or is it...
We just work together and make it work.
You just figured it out.
We figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on the building maintenance, four thirty-five, you have tools, two thousand five hundred. Is there tools you are replacing it? Are there specific tools?
So both. So we do...this Buildings and Grounds Department, when I came on, was really non-existent. So we are slowly trying to build it to have things. So when we did the bridges, you know, we bought some tools. We bought a trailer and stuff for the bridge department. This is kind of that whole group. So it's more specialty tools to be able to maintain what we need to maintain in these buildings.
Do you have an inventory of those tools? We haven't in the past, so that's why I...
I have a full inventory of what we have now, yes. And if you would like something for what we look to purchase, I can do that as well.
I just generally...
Yes, we have an inventory of everything.
I think, at least for me, the longer the answer is you have an inventory.
That's what I was looking for. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. You have an inventory.
I don't think I made it known. You're getting a new Fram Razzor.
Yep, we have inventories, and they're actually marked.
Okay, because for a while, when I first came on, we didn't...we weren't quite sure how many shovels or this or that we had, so...
No, we actually...we're working on tagging everything, so everything gets assigned to a truck. You know, so H D one has his tools, and then this one has this tool, so that, you know, if I go and I need to use something, and I open it up, or I look in another truck, and his thing is supposed to be here and there, that's where I came from. So for us, it's everything is set in where it's supposed to be, so we follow through with that.
Thank you. Anybody else on the four hundred series?
Question.
Sure.
So I know, and we don't offset this by revenue. The revenue flows into a different bucket, but the monies that we're receiving for landing fees for our docks, just offhand, do you know, Casey, are they covering some of this planned expense for grounds maintenance, thirteen and a half? Probably more in there, but are we covering...kind of covering that with the revenues coming in?
I do not know that answer.
Okay, no big deal. But I mean, I know we've spruced up our requirement for people to pay their landing fees, and I know we don't do income statements for every bloody line item of revenue. I just want to make sure that we're up to date on those, and they at least look like they're covering. Sounds like they do. Thirty-five hundred to land a boat?
There is a landing fee for the Libby.
Right.
And that goes into a special account for the Libby that doesn't repairs. The landing fares here at the town docks are just going to the general fund.
Yeah, that's why I ask, because in the four thirty-one line, it says Libby Museum.
That's... That's mowing in the park outside the buildings, nothing to do with the docks or the...
Ah, I said, look at the Libby Park.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else in the four hundred series? Five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred?
Okay, so your next budget is solid waste disposal. This budget is up twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, or 2% even.
Okay. We'll start at the one hundred series, and this is one where the Public Works Director was in there. About...for about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, okay. Nobody...two hundred series, three hundred series, four hundred series.
Question.
Yep.
Any maintenance going to be performed over in that facility this coming year? I know the one thing that I was wondering about is ventilation in the building. I guess there were going to be some fans installed to help with...
We put those in last year. And in capital outlay, I have put in for...we need to replace the concrete floor inside.
The what floor?
The concrete floor in the bottom of the facility.
And have they straightened out the issues with the baler and the electricity to the baler?
We took care of all that last winter, or last winter, early spring. So a lot of that came out of this year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
That was the four hundred series, five hundred series, six hundred series, seven hundred series, eight hundred series. Any other questions for Public Works? The whole works, the whole department. We just finished doing the whole works.
Steve?
Everybody's fine?
Ask the little question for Steve. Are we getting any hint that tipping fees, hazardous waste collection, storage, getting any hint that the cost of doing all that is going to potentially surprise us?
We have a contract for the tipping fees, and the increase in that, I believe, is 5%, which is built into this budget. That's pretty much where the increase is coming from. So all that is factored in for one more year. After that, it's game on. We're going to be back in the hunt of renegotiating again.
So this gets...I was more...yeah, okay. So back to the monitoring that we do, are we going to be seeing more monitoring requirements on the...
You mean like the cap and that kind of thing?
Run-off waters?
Nope, we're actually in pretty good shape with that. So the consultant line in here is, we have consultants that come in, do all the monitoring, submit all the forms and all that good stuff, and we're actually in really good shape at both. So this budget covers solid waste and the Wickers facility as well.
Okay. The reason I'm asking the question is, you know, it's a cause celebre right now that we need to monitor for all these different chemicals appropriately, and just want to make sure that we have an answer to the question, so we can put the...
No, we're...
Asked, answered.
Yes, we are in really good shape as far as all of our compliances go.
Sounds good.
And again, if we...we talked about as a board going and looking over fees, we did raise those fees, but we should look at those annually based on where our costs are going when we look at all the other fees.
Yep, I think April is a great time for that, and then, which is when we did, like it was a full year of seeing where we're at. We'll be able to adjust accordingly if needed, and then if we do that annually, we can start to...
So we'd like to see the users pay for it.
One hundred percent.
Okay, we're going to go to water?
So water, the first section within your water budget is Personnel Administration. If you recall, a few years back, we broke out health insurance and life insurances into standalone budgets. Therefore, in the enterprise funds, they are the cover sheet for the budget, and I believe this covers seven full-time employees.
Correct.
So in this budget, where you have the health insurance, if I read this correctly, we have three open positions. And I'm assuming we're estimating those as, it looks like...
Full family, that's correct.
We're doing...so full family. So we...that's why we probably are having this large number in the health insurance.
Yeah, we usually do practice doing worst-case scenario, putting in full family.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
I would also state, last year, you know, when we got to the Budget Committee level, we were able to bring on a couple of staff members in the process, and we were able to make an adjustment downward on the floor through the Budget Committee, and we would continue that practice if we're able to bring staffing on board.
Correct.
Okay, so any other questions on Personal Administration? We'll go on to Technical Services, Technological Services.
I put the money in, and he spends it pretty good. I think we did iPads this year and a couple of computers and setups for these two gentlemen, so...
And the iPads, if I remember correctly, Steve, part of that purpose was to have them on the roads for the lead inventory, and then they will be interfaced with your asset management software, so they can actually do work on the road, correct?
Correct, and that is already up and running. So they get all their work orders through the iPad, they make their notes on real-time onsite, take pictures, and file.
And that's all going into that new program?
Yep.
That's great.
And again, I can't speak enough about the...and we have only scratched the surface. We're still in training. We've got another three months of training on it, and I'm ecstatic.
Okay. Do...and I ask this, do we know that we have lead pipes? I know we know we have lead fixtures, but do we know of any lead pipe mains?
It's not lead pipe mains. We're going to have some goose necks, we're going to have some connections. We don't necessarily have lead pipes. We're going to have ductile pipe, we're going to have cast iron pipe. You know, we're not going to have a lead pipe, we'll have galvanized pipe.
Lead joints.
We have lead joints, but not lead pipe.
Okay. And we put a certain amount of phosphorus in our water because we have those lead fixtures, or why do we put the phosphorus in the water that we do?
So your phosphate is just basically a... My name is Chris. So the phosphate additive that we put in is just basically a corrosion inhibitor. So what it's doing is stopping the rust process that builds up on the inside of the pipes, puts a coating on it, and keeps the mineral from sticking to itself.
Okay. The reason I ask is phosphorus is our issue with our water, our ponds and lakes, and so I've been asked, oh, how come the town's putting phosphorus in its water? So it's really so that our pipes don't corrode and we get buildup inside our pipes.
Yes, it creates it from being able to choke down. The increase is called tuberculosis inside that builds up, and with that phosphate additive, it doesn't...it puts a coating on it, and it doesn't allow it to stick to itself.
And how is that...do we put a small amount or a large amount?
It's a very...it is a very small amount. I don't remember the actual parts per million that gets added, but a barrel lasts quite a while, and it's administered into the finished water before it goes out to our dissection tank.
Yep, so phosphate and phosphorus are two different chemicals.
Correct.
They're different, but they're related. And I think Lynda's question is, you know, is ruminating around in people's minds, it says, at the tail end of the pipe, you know, what's in there that shouldn't be in there? And doesn't that...I don't know, this may be a leading here, but doesn't that come out in the water quality tests that we do?
It does. We do consumer confidence reports every year, and we pass with flying colors. Those are available here at the Town Hall or at the Water Treatment Plant.
But again, to answer Lynda's question, just we need to make sure that we can somehow point out that they're two different chemicals, they're related, but they're different, and it's not phosphorus, it's phosphates.
Phosphate.
And when we do this thing, and we publish a report, we can say with a high degree of confidence, because it goes to the state, right?
Correct, it goes to a state lab, and then we publish those reports every year. So everything, every maximum contaminant level that we have to be able to pass, we pass. We don't exceed those. So we test, as far as bacterial tests, we test every month. We also test for our phosphate level, it's daily.
Daily.
So we check a free chlorine, total chlorine, every morning, every afternoon. We check for a phosphate level. We also check for the clarity of our water. We check our turbidity meters, which is telling us how clear our water is, everything pre- and post filtration. So our water is pretty top-notch. It's the distribution system.
Yes, gives you the...yes, I know.
The other guys that are hosing it.
Yes, and we just went through our filter rehab up there. So our treatment plant's looking good.
At the pond.
Yeah.
It's our aged pipes.
Aged pipes.
Okay, so we're ready to go into distribution, correct?
We are.
So distribution, you will see this budget is up seventy-one thousand, seventy-five dollars, or 8.5 percent. The one thing that I would note about these budgets as we go forward, revisits would absolutely be the administrative allocations, because we have not punched in the numbers yet, because we haven't got all of the data to be able to fulfill the formula.
And the data being insurance and the administrative costs of your...
It's actually the number of mailings that take place out of the billing and collections office.
All right, so you're overhead.
Yeah, we're working through it.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, one hundred series, two hundred series, three hundred series. Outside services has an increase, is there a reason?
We've seen a bit of an increase in needing some outside help in some of our digs, for example, or in our PRV and some other...a lot of it is electrical as well.
Anybody else? Three hundred series, four hundred series, five hundred series, six hundred series, seven hundred series, eight hundred series, nine hundred series? And am I correct that this budget will be calculated into the fee, the new fees when we get that?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that I dropped off saying. We're currently having the study performed for them to come in front of us for a rate adjustment for the water and sewer rates. Do we have an idea when they might be...
He's hoping within a couple of weeks he'll have that stuff first.
And it's...Lynda? And it's just, you want to do that because you want to just double-check, or you want to do that because you see a problem?
I want to do that because what I want to do is, two reasons. One, my first year of having the water and sewer system, so I want it set up the way that I feel it should be set up, which is, this is what we want to do. How much money do we need to have to do it? And can we do it? Or we can't do this, so we have to adjust what we need to do. So in order to do that, I need an accurate, this is what I want, and this is what we got. And I need a nice, accurate line to do, make that happen, a baseline. And it's recommended every two years.
Congratulations on that. So without getting into the sauce, I don't know what your capital ask is, you know, on the Warren side, but for the past several years running, that enterprise fund actually produces cash at the end of the year, four hundred fifty thousand dollars, four hundred fifty-one, to be pretty darn close. But that doesn't include, you know, what your capital ask is going to be going forward. So you may come back and say, I need a half a gazillion of capital, and that'll blow that number right out of the water.
Which is why...
Unless we bond it and then, you know...
Well, the goal is, again, I'll go back to what we were talking about earlier with the general fund projects, between maintenance projects and, you know, Warren, Oticle Road money, we have, like, this project out here, the water rates are never going to pay for that.
Never.
But we have a green street that we can pay for, we have a river street that I want to do, we have the smaller ones that are on this, that this should be able to be able to do.
But doesn't it pay the bond payment for that water? It does do that.
It does.
Because that accumulation extra...
Through the debt service.
Does your road projects and carries on and is able to pay, and all those get part of that analysis when they came and give us...
Yes, but I guess I'm just kind of drilling down to a more couple hundred thousand dollar line.
Well, you know, another way of looking at it is the amount of capital that's gone into water is actually, on a year-over-year basis, declining. So an argument could be made, unfairly, of course, that you need to invest more capital in your water fund. You're producing a positive bottom line at the moment, but a minor amount of CapEx could blow out your reserves. So it's not, to Jim's point, it's not, and your point, it's not a bad idea to look at your prices and see if they're contemporary.
It's the same thing of doing the solid waste, it's the same thing of everything, of updating what our rates are, where we are at, so it gives us a baseline to go forward.
Smart.
Correct.
Ooh rah.
All right, we're going to move on to the treatment plant.
Oh, boy.
All righty.
So same thing, Treatment Plant, budget is actually down forty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, or 6.2 percent.
One hundred series, and the wages are down.
So I had, in the reorg...
So I had, in the reorganization, I had moved the operations manager from this department, excuse me, into water distribution. I don't know if that was correct, but that is what I did.
I-
Maybe an adjustment?
No, I-
Also, if I'm not, and if I'm wrong with this, in last year's budget, the water foreman, which was Chris,
Yes.
was paid out of the treatment plant budget. That is now not there. That, that should be backed down into distribution, so that's why those numbers are a little skewed. They're the same, but not. That's, I think, is the biggest drive on this.
That is what I was saying also. I moved the operation manager, which happens to be that person-
Yes.
From one department to the other. And, yes.
But at the enterprise fund level, nothing really changed, right?
That's, um-
Well, I think they're less-
The salaries changed a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Are there less people in this department now?
No, the head count is gonna stay the same. So we'll still have, we'll have a operations manager plus six, and we've always had, it's been the same head count, because it was six plus a superintendent before, so.
So at the, at the top of the enterprise fund, at the top of the water enterprise fund, you know, it balances out. It's just how you distributed those costs are different.
Yes, I went through that exercise yesterday to make sure.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, salaries are a little different for people and insurance, but generally speaking, yes, that is a true statement.
I would say also that last year's budget, looking at it, superintendent was fully allocated to the water distribution budget.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause it said the budget was $170,000, and that's just the moving of that one employee up to, from the treatment plant to the distribution. We didn't cut back, other than that one supervisor, any of the number of people who are presently at the plant.
Correct.
Right, 'cause in the distribution, it went from 130,000 to 180. That's me moving that position.
All right. Anything else on 100? 200? 300? Outside services, 380. Outside services, is there anything significant in that budget that was added? Was it just a difference in prices?
Lot, just difference in pricing.
When was it?
380. It's a, yeah, it's a $1,000 difference in last year's proposed budget.
All right, thank you. 400 series.
How about your ground maintenance, machinery maintenance, and building maintenance? Just explain what-
I'm sorry, Brian, which one are we on?
We're on 400, so-
435.
431, 33, and 35. Just wondering what you're gonna be maintaining.
So if you've ever been at the water plant, we have acres upon acres of grass. We have cross-country trail lines that run down through the backwoods. That's the easy stuff. We have multiple buildings. There is some capital outlay asks in the back for building work, whether it be roofs and doors. We have routine maintenance on all of the rest of it. That's a very large facility, plus the PRVs and all the other pump houses that we do have around town.
So is it catch-up maintenance this year?
Well, it's, it's always maintenance, so you can- It's always, it's always gonna be maintenance. So a lot of it is catch-up, sure, but a lot of it is routine.
Okay.
And that facility is, looks really good.
Yes, and it's, Josh, Josh runs that.
Yep.
Fantastic.
Yep.
And he does a very, very good job up there. That's Josh. We are all-
He can have it, right?
He can have it, and we are all very appreciative of the work that he does up there.
Yeah.
He does a great job. He's a huge asset for the town.
All right. Does that take care of your questions, Brian?
Absolutely.
Okay, 500 series. 600 series. And I'm, I'm assuming that 610 general operating supplies, that is just the amount you asked for last year?
Correct, and it's the difference between, luckily Jim has it pulled up. Some of it is, it is, some of it is an increase, but that's also based on, these are numbers that go out to bid, so it's also 2025 pricing.
Any other? 600? 700? 800? 900?
Yes, and interest payments. Debt service.
Okay.
I can't hear you.
That takes care of water, and I'll, we'll do sewer, and then we'll go back to capital outlay and do all the capital outlay together.
Yeah, so sewer is the same makeup. The first portion, you will see the personnel administration, and this has one full-time employee. Remember, the sewer department, the fees pay for the operations. Capital is paid for through taxation.
Just a, just a comment on that. Fees are paid for not only through the operation, but they're also paid for off the balance sheet. $532,160 comes off the balance sheet.
That, that's what he's referring to. That's the sewer operating transfer from the general fund.
Oh, I thought he was just saying that the fees, the bills pay for the operation, and that the debt is paid for by general taxation. And just, if I wasn't clear, I apologize.
That is correct, what you just said.
I apologize for that. So the fees do not cover the total cost to run the facility.
Correct.
By $532,160.
Which is the capital expense, correct?
It's the capital expenses.
Which is coming off the balance sheet.
Which is accounted for in your general fund budget under the interfund transfer.
It's transferred off the balance sheet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Paid by the taxes.
Paid by taxes.
Absolutely, and that was a decision made by the town. Okay, we did the personal, now we have technology, technical services. That looks like the same. Any questions? All right, let's go to sewer collection.
So sewer collections, the sewer collection budget is up $5,788 or 1.6%.
Okay, 100 series. 200 series. 300 series. 400 series. 600 series. 700 series. 800 series. 900 series. Waste water treatment.
So wastewater treatment plant, this, this budget will require revisit. We do not get our contracted services price until October. So Steve has a meeting with them Friday, I believe. So maybe we'll have it Friday, but that will need to be revisited.
Okay, so will we visit 392? Any other issues in the 300 series?
The other thing I would say about that is, we're also waiting, if you recall, we had a conversation about extending the existing contract. We're, we're working through those particulars now, so hopefully in the next couple of months, we have a draft contract extension in front of you.
400 series. 500 series. 600 series. 800 series, and the 900 series. That's-
Those are your operating budgets.
So now we need to go to capital outline.
Yeah, I'm gonna move, so when you throw stuff, I don't get hit.
Why am I gonna throw things?
Is this where we start, is this where we start throwing stuff, Steve?
I am one of the most calmest people that you even think you know about.
That doesn't mean we can't throw anything, though.
I'm much better now, Paul.
Doesn't mean you don't ask for a lot.
Doesn't mean I didn't used to throw things.
There you go.
Where do you like to start?
The first one, I haven't got the page number yet, but I think it's solid waste concrete, concrete floor.
Page 24.
Page 24?
24.
Thank you.
There it is.
Which one did you say?
The solid waste concrete floor.
Okay, that's the first one I had, I'm just making sure.
So this is a replacement of the floor, as Steve alluded to. He can speak to it, but it appears that there is some rebar that's starting to show. The thing is starting to wear pretty significantly.
So this is the, this is the innards-
Yes.
Where-
The, the actual work facility.
This is actually where you recycle-
Where you throw your garbage in over through the windows, that whole, that whole floor and the whole facility. So this is to do half of it. We're gonna split it in half, half and half.
And the comment here is, internal, you know, our folks are gonna tear it up and somebody's gonna lay the concrete.
Yes.
You got the resources, obviously, to do that.
Correct.
So when do you see doing this? 'Cause I hope we don't plan to do it in the summer.
I was thinking 4th of July weekend. I mean, I'm, I'm good with it.
Ding, ding, ding.
You have the day off anyway, so.
No, I would think-
Ding, 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 ding.
I foresee spring. Once we get approval, probably jump right on it. That's before everybody starts to come back and open everything up. In a perfect world, we're looking at close to three days. We're closed for two. So we'll, we'll do some wiggling and some juggling, and then-
You probably can't do it any earlier than spring, 'cause concrete doesn't like cold weather, right?
Correct. You know, and the, and the facility is-
You can't do it through 4th of July, 'cause that's probably not a good time to do it.
The facility is heated, but not heated enough, so.
Yeah.
And we can't close for more than, we can't close it.
And this has been bid out. You have, you have all the, the-
So it will be rebid again, but these are, these are good numbers. Yeah, these are solid numbers.
And Paul, they're not putting radiant floor heating in it?
No, we're not putting radiant heat in.
And I don't believe we said the amount. This is for $45,000.
I'm sorry, yes, $45,000. And again, it's for half of the floor. Next year, I will propose we do the other half.
$9,000 project.
Yeah.
All righty, any other questions on that one? And I'd like to note that it is urgent by the department, and rationale is all, also urgent, because I will look that in some of the other ones.
Yes, we have, like I said, the rebar and the wire is sticking up through the floor right now.
That's an urgent one.
That's urgent, and where does, where does the, if this is the right term, where does the fluid that currently hits that floor, where is it going now?
So there is a, there is a grease trap or an oil separator outside. Once it gets full, we have it pumped out and disposed of properly.
So when the rebar starts exposing, that grease trap now has a competitor to suck up the fluid, which could put it into the ground?
No, because the rebar is at, is on the top third of the, of the concrete as it is. So the concrete is still sealed underneath. There is cracks. I can't tell you, there's nothing leaking through, but-
But ignoring it is not gonna make this-
Well, ignoring it's not an option, because right now, if you've ever seen them, they, you throw your garbage through the window, and then the machines pick it up and move it. Well, those machines, as they're running back and forth on top of that concrete-
Yeah, yeah, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Is where the issues are.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, again, put the pencil down on, let's delay, delay, delay this one. It's urgent, you think it's urgent, needs to be done. Okay, good, thank you.
And I'm thinking, 'cause some of his other ones aren't urgent.
That's right, some kind of wanna.
I'll bring that one out particularly.
This is a wanna. This is, this is an urgent.
So the next one is a dumpster, and this one is necessary and is not marked urgent.
Correct.
So you want to explain to us this one?
So back to Paul's question earlier, as far as our tipping fees. At some point, I think we are, we are working towards being more self-sufficient in taking care of our own waste. So our own dumpsters, our own truck, our own trucking, because we spend about $150,000 a year right now just in trucking, not tipping fees, just to actually move it. And right now, our deal with Casella is they supply us with the dumpsters until those dumpsters break down, and then they're gonna start charging us rent on the dumpsters. So what I've been trying to do for the last couple of years is start to slowly invest into this setup, so that when the time comes, we have the material needed to be more self-sufficient.
So are you planning to own the dumpsters and the truck?
Yes, eventually I wanna-
So you can get one of them trucks with the things that, you know, that-
Yes.
So your, your objective is to say to Casella over time, we're doing this all by ourselves?
Correct, and at that point, we can, we can call Casella, we can call waste management, we can find out, we can negotiate where to take it to and have a little bit more control over what we spent.
So you're saying right now, for us to truck it is $150,000, so-
We pay Casella $150,000 a year just to truck it.
So we need to have the analysis on, here we truck, they truck it, here we truck it, what it costs for a truck and everything, and where's our break-even point?
So I have asked in, in CIP, I had put forward to buy a used truck and a couple dumpsters this year, so that, for 25. So right now, back up a minute, right now, we pay a premium to Casella for, for service, because when, when our comps and things are full, we're dead in the water. We can't move them, we can't do anything. So what I wanted to do was start, as we start to invest in this, was to buy a used truck, so we could at least move our own stuff around and get our feet wet before we go and spend $300,000 on a new truck to, to run this stuff. So slowly get into this over the next couple of years, and I, I had requested that in CIP this year as well, for 25.
And so you say it's $150 a year?
Yes.
Where does our stuff go?
Belmont.
Belmont. All of it?
Well, the mass waste goes to Belmont, and then plastic goes to here, and the cardboard goes to here, but for this conversation-
And Belmont transships at some points, so it could go to Danvers.
So they, they handle all of our demo, our metal, anything that goes on that run.
Okay. So this, this conversation comes up again and again. So the out-of-pocket expense, just for giggles, is $300,000 to buy a truck, plus three cans. And that offsets, and that, that's a, let's say it's another 100 for the three cans?
No, no, cans are only 10 grand apiece.
Yeah, so 330.
What I got in here for this.
Actually, $150,000 bucks a year to have them do it. So before you start, you know, you're spending two years of fees before you even start. So that's, I think, to my colleague's point, we need to understand, is that a good idea?
100%, because it's not, and it's not just the truck, which is why, it's not just a $300,000 truck, it's another, it's another employee, because we can't do that with-
It's more headcount, it's more gas.
Which is why-
It's more truck tires.
That is, which is why I haven't, which is why I didn't bring this, I'm not bringing this this year. This is a slow wade into, maybe we just go the middle route, which is we can move our own cans. We don't pay a premium to have them come up, because we can move them, we can store them, we have our own stuff, and then they can come up and do the mass shipping on their own.
I don't think I was, and I, maybe Linda wasn't, wasn't as well, I'm not asking you to do the analysis. I'm just trying to set the conditions so that we don't say, don't worry about it, it'll take us a couple of years, and we'll break even after then. And I go, where's, where's the cash capital pays for that? I just wanna make sure we're eyes up, heads up.
Brad?
Yeah, I just wanna say that when I was working on phosphate, I went through the same process that Steve's looking at now. And it's probably about five or six years ago now, and it, you start running the numbers and then look at the, the years out on it. Obviously, you have a big initial investment on it, but you got a truck that's gonna last, you know, probably 12, 15 years, stuff like that. The payout does, the math does work on it, and that was a much smaller town than we are here as far as the amount of volume that we had to deal with there and stuff. So I think this is a very good idea to look at and to, you know, start, you know, doing that benefit cost analysis on, and, you know, to start thinking about the future with this, 'cause it-
Yeah, this is definitely the long game question. You know, the floor is now, this is a, yeah.
And it may be, what are the things we have on our plate coming up, on whether this is the time to do it or not?
Well, I think the other thing that will be really interesting, you know, next year, at this time, we're gonna be sitting in front of you with a new contract for tipping fees, and we all have seen what contracts are doing.
That's why I was asking earlier. If this thing starts to get monstrous, then, you know, then-
Well, then that makes the conversation a little easier. So this is, you know, we're at that point now to start to have this conversation, because we have negotiations next year for tipping fees and where we are at, and- So this is, you know, we're at that point now to start to have this conversation, because we have negotiations next year for tipping fees and where we are at, and...
If, if, as long as we understand that a tipping fee is what you pay the landfill person, it's not what you pay the, the trucker's passing the fee straight through.
It's only, the, the $150,000 is just for the truck, it's not to dump it. I just want to make sure you understand.
But his cost to dump is in that 150?
No.
So you're paying an additional cost?
Oh yeah, no, we're paying an additional...
I take it back.
It's just, the truck is 150.
Sorry?
Yeah, if you look at the breakdown, Paul, in the budget, it'll show you what the tip, so the difference is hauling and tipping.
You don't have to explain it, I'll read it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I did some, um, when you brought this up a little bit back, I did some numbers. Employee, truck, cans, fuel, guessing, my guess was four and a half to five years would be a break even when we're starting to get benefits. As long as, that's, the, the if was buying an old truck, and how much maintenance is going to be on an old truck? And if we're buying used cans, how long are the cans going to last? That I didn't know. That's not my expertise. But in a, in, in a good world, with everything working, I was four and a half to five years. You haven't gone that deep yet?
Well, no, I, I, I agree with you. I think that's a reasonable number. Again, it all comes down to truck specs and things along those, that lines. But, you know, as you're doing this, and then how do you budget for the manpower? You're not going to pay off another headcount in five years, that's a constant number. So, you know, by the time we factor in our packages and everything else, that, that is a number, you know.
But I think, I think the, the short discussion is, is right. I mean, you're going to increase your, your fixed costs, you're going to increase your costs. It's going to take you like five years to pay it off. And then the question for all of us, and for, you know, for you and Jim, is if you lay them all out in terms of the priorities, is this the number one priority? Number two, number three, number four, number five, six, seven?
I totally understand, but I need to bring it through, so we can have these conversations, so we know what's coming down the pipe.
That's, that's healthy.
Because I do think, operationally, if, if we do not do this going forward, one of the conversations that has to be had is, we need to build another bunk up there for a vacant dumpster to be able to sit in, so that we are not paying this premium for the three-hour turnaround, for them to come here, unload an empty dumpster, drive over, load up a full dumpster, move it over, dump the full dumpster, go over, load the empty dumpster, back it into the spot, dump the new empty dumpster in the log, go back over, load the full dumpster, and take it away.
And that doesn't even include the two comps?
That sounds like trash can Tetris.
That's exactly what it is.
So that cost a year, what does that cost us a year?
That's the 150,000.
That's, that's not even taking it off the lot.
No, no, I apologize. So I don't have a breakdown of, no. That's in the 150. It's 400, and I believe it's 485 is what it's going to be right now for swapping. I don't know what it would be for the, not the premium, because I've never spec'd that out. This is, I'm, I'm still working off the contract I inherited.
That's a, that's a Tetris.
Okay, so our next item, I believe, is page 33, which is roofs for the water treatment plant.
$24,000.
Where, where are we there?
Page 33.
33.
So, one of the, sorry, Steve, one of the things that I can say about this is, we did have this building looked at for the addition of solar. Unfortunately, the proximity of this property to the abutting property, we would have to take down a significant amount of trees on a private land, to which it's not going to work. So solar at this location, while we've talked about it, we've talked with Nancy Hirschberg about it from the Energy Committee, it's something that we're not pursuing.
And was the theory that this was baseload, or the solar was just going to be used to put it into Beras grid?
I don't even know if we got that far. I think it was obviously going to be used at the plant, and then to go into the grid.
It, there was a, there was a grant opportunity.
Ah, okay.
So this is to do, redo a couple of the roofs at a couple of the buildings that are up there, the pump building and the meter building. The shingles are starting to curl and slide, and we'd like to get to it ahead of time.
Is it a corrugated steel, a standing seam, or a...
It'll be a standing seam that matches the plant.
Right. So not a screw-down, but a standing seam?
Correct. So it should be a one-and-done.
$24,000.
They're a small building.
So again, if we set our fees, we can set our, our fees to cover this. Anybody have any other questions?
And just for giggles, given, given your, your debt service and given the outlook for water, because I think water's pretty constant, right? It's, you can kind of predict your revenues. You'll, you'll still do it without having to set fees.
I'm sorry?
You could still do this without having to set fees. $24,000 bucks, you're pushing out, your debt service is going down on a year-over-year basis by $15,000? And your income is $500,000?
But you need to start planning for the future.
That's the point.
You know?
That's...
And that's what the engineers...
Capitalize the bundles, and then figure out what your fees need to be.
They're not just doing one year.
You've got it.
No, so...
And that's why I'm asking whether these things are in all that bigger calculation, and the answer is yes.
Yeah.
Everything that I am proposing will be looked at into that rate study, and then we can pick and choose if, if is needed.
If we think we want, don't want to raise the rate that much.
Correct. Then, then we, then we don't do a roof, or we don't do a main, or we don't do a, you know...
I believe the past two rate studies we had performed said that, look, you are all set on an annual basis to spend $150,000 a year on capital. We need to just reconfirm that that number is accurate going forward, because the bond for this water line when it comes on board is going to have a little bit of an ouch factor.
Yeah. Yeah.
34, I think, is, is doors?
Yep. The next one I have is some, is a set of, uh...
Can I just back up though?
Sure.
Because Barry, Barry does, Barry gives us a, or has in the past said, you know, in, in year five, I can reasonably expect to be spending N dollars, you know, when he was doing his, his conversion. So this is just for 25. You have a, I'm sure you have a 26, 7, 8, 9. So that'll be laid into the fee structure discussion. Okay. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
34, the doors.
The doors.
For $25,000, just want to keep saying the number.
The doors.
There's zero on that. So we have a set of metal doors on the meter building that are, that are fully rotted, and those all need to be replaced.
Steve, just for clarifying from my notes, the meter building at the main plant?
Yes.
How big are these doors?
They're double doors. I, I'm actually questioning the typo as I'm staring at it again. And that, that seems like a lot, that seems like a high number. Yep. And I know that, but he only listed the meter doors.
Revisit.
Let's revisit.
Can we revisit that? I'm sorry, I apologize.
Parking lot, revisit.
Yeah, we're not putting in a $50,000 toilet there too, are we?
Yes, we are.
It's heated, though.
It's a heated toilet.
It's a big day.
So I, I apologize for that. It, something is not, something is not right, to my eyes on that.
The doors.
So your next item is 35, sewer fund. This is money to be able to get some replacement parts for some of our aging pumps, which we're having trouble securing parts.
Why isn't this urgent?
Yeah.
Because we do have some things, so if it becomes urgent, we'll buy them. This is more of a, I, I kind of put this on the lines of, I would really like to have these, but if we have to cut something...
You're okay cutting this?
I'll cut them. Because if, if one of them dies, I'm going to buy it anyway. So, because we have to. So it's one of those, how much do we call urgent to have something that sits on a shelf? Or, which is why I think it's necessary, but I don't, it's not, they're not dead, so I wouldn't call them urgent.
Okay.
And this goes along with the fact that, over the next year, we're going to be appropriated, and I believe it's $100,000 in a warrant article, to have the remaining seven smaller pump stations evaluated, so that we can have a comprehensive plan on how to replace those in the coming years. That was discussed at CIP.
Evaluated, but not...
It's a, it's a P, not a D.
Correct. Because again, it's the same thing. We have to plan it.
I think that's, we're going to plan.
We're going to, it's a PBD, Plan Before Do.
The poor public, it's not going to know P and D's.
It's PPP, it's...
You've got to talk ball's language.
Again, we have to plan it, because we need to, we need to permit it.
I know, you got to get the old...
It's all, everything with us is planning first. Trust me, I would much rather do, but I still have to plan.
Is there any other questions on any of the budgets?
Notice Linda raised her voice to get that fired.
Move us on.
Are we going to get non-rotting doors this time?
Brian, they're 20-plus years old. They're 30 years old.
The old 96 doors?
We want composite doors.
So even composite will rot over time. It just, it's...
So, so if this is the, if this is all the capital for sewer, is there, is there more out there? You're going to do a sewer rate study as well?
Water and sewer, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, there's not a lot of capital here.
No, but you're going to see warrant articles.
Warrant articles for it, Paul.
Don't, don't worry, Paul.
I'm just...
Don't worry.
It's coming.
Don't worry, it's coming.
Don't worry.
I was going to, I was going to, I was going to say something again in Belvida, but you-know-what is going to hit the fan, I won't do that. So there's more coming.
There's one thing that you can count on, is that we will have, we will ask for money to spend.
That Steve spends money.
Because I spend money.
It's core business. That, that's not meant to support or not support what you're doing. This is the core business. We get this wrong, it's, it's you-know-what everywhere.
Correct.
So with the sewer, you're going to see probably even ask for $4 million for a sewer line down through South Main Street. You're going to see a, a number come in front of you for finishing the Mill Street Pump Station. You're going to see a number coming in front of you to do the engineering for the balance of the seven stations.
The next one in line, not the, we won't get all seven.
No, but...
I just want to clarify. Yes, to start.
Is, you're going to see a lot of asks in the sewer.
A lot of Ps.
Which is why this one also is a, is a necessary, not an urgent.
I'll buy it.
It's prioritized. When I put it down on the list...
You say necessary when it says deal.
Yeah. Explain to me why.
If I say everything is urgent, it kind of loses its...
In other words...
Urgency.
Yes.
It sounds like crisis management.
Paul, we've got to get the doors while we have a chance.
My, my concern was if we lost one of those pumps. And that's why I asked whether it was urgent or...
We will find the money to, we will find the money, because we don't have a choice, so...
If you want, that's fine.
I'm not, we won't put out a notice that says, sorry, guys, no flushing. You can't flush, because...
That's right, we just lost a pump.
We lost a pump, so just, you know, hold it.
Hold it.
So I believe that covers everything for this evening, correct?
That's all with the budget. We now are going to go on to deal with Route 28. And I didn't bring copies. Did you bring copies?
I brought one for myself.
Can you, can somebody make a bunch of copies? Let's see, we need...
We'll take care of it right now. Steve's here. Jeremy Mitchell is here from the Electric Department. Jeremy, you can come up and take my seat and answer questions that they may have about MEG.
All right. I was wondering why he was sitting there so quietly.
Sorry, I can't guarantee anything.
Is it time for the curb to land?
Hey, Steve?
Yes, I wish I could do that.
You don't have a big sign on the side of the road that says, if it's yellow, let it mellow, if it's brown, flush it down.
Yeah, we're still live.
That's okay.
Okay.
That was at the camp, that was at the camp when I was a kid.
I know.
That was, that was a sign on the wall. You had to follow the rules.
Are you done with the garlic bread?
Now, yeah.
I'll leave it in there. You want to take some home?
Oh, you should have brought Tupperware, isn't that...
Never use Tupperware, just use your plastic bags. And, and... I'm throwing my trash away, can I get yours?
It's my house, so the stuff from...
Seems like we're still mic'd, everybody.
It has to be done by November 1st, so...
So you're driving back down tonight? You got the cookies over there, anything left?
I do. I, well, I'll try to answer as many questions as I can, I'll put it there. As far as I know, he hasn't, no.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
I've had enough entertainment for the day. I got to spend hours with these two gentlemen.
Not you.
Yeah, she yelled at me a lot.
I did not.
She's yelling.
I heard you out there.
Yeah.
Hey, you did very good at the senior.
We are still on camera. Sometimes I...
I double sided them.
See, I don't quite believe some of these numbers.
Well, then make up your own. If you don't believe them, then you have a responsibility to make it up.
I got my own, I don't need it. Give it to me anyway.
It's all yours.
I got, I brought my own, because I don't like double sided.
You can do...
We're going to start with Pickering, Pickering Corner and South, Pickering Corner. And we have three options. We have the mini build, the compact roundabout, enhanced striping, and the traffic light. Yes, if you can count. Why don't we start with the traffic light? And that is the one over...
Do you want me to get up and point and narrate?
I think so, because that's what we're trying to make sure that what we see there and what we find there, pluses and minuses are the same.
Hello? No.
Johnny Carson. Colorblind.
Okay, so this one is the signalized section. And the matrix that we put together, we can start with parking spaces that we're losing. So to do the traffic light, we're going to lose about 11 spaces.
And did that, did you count the ones in front of the church and Carpenter School in that 11?
That comes from here, and these in through here. Yes.
So it's from the, it's from the crosswalk in front of the church, just before the crosswalk, all the way up to where the traffic light would be, and then it's on the Pickering House side. all the way up to where the traffic light would be, and then it's on the Pickering House side, those parking spaces as well.
So there are still some spaces that will be available through here.
In front of Carpenter School, but Pickering, the Pavilion loses the parking.
The church ones are gone.
Okay.
Everything on this side, on the southbound side is gone, and we lose a couple here by the gas station in front of the Pavilion. Those will be gone.
Okay, what's in the center there?
That is like a, just a lane split painted traffic diverter.
So is that just painted on the ground?
Yes, it'd be doubled yellow, painted like you would see, just to flare the traffic back. So it comes from the one, and then that's here to flare in for that second turn lane that actually gets added at the light. So it lane shifts everybody towards the church into one lane. Once you get past the church, it opens up to the double lane to do the turn lane.
So Linda, you remember Dave, your predecessor, pointed out that in this scenario, those parking spaces, correct me if I'm wrong, when those parking spaces go away, all of a sudden now you have moving pieces of steel closer to pedestrians.
Yes, but.
Not parking spaces, but cars.
Well, you still have the, this is, still has a breakdown lane or a shoulder lane right through here. As you look over through like the corridor, similar to that, it's not quite as wide as the bike lanes. But they are still, it's not white lane, white line, curb. It's white line, couple feet, curb.
And that has a big impact on the church in terms of weddings and funerals.
Absolutely. And that's just obviously the first part. The second part would be the impact of the gas stations. Their entrances will be better defined than they are now, but it's actually decreasing space for them. Because the light towers, especially the corner store, that is where one of the biggest light towers is gonna be positioned. And that whole corner shifts in towards their canopy.
It shifts in towards the gas station.
Yes, towards the gas station.
So I'm gonna ask the same question for this that I'm gonna ask for all of them, so I can ask it once. How does the state determine for this project, for the enhanced striping, for the compact roundabout and mini, how did they determine the length of space or time they need to move and spread traffic out before a set of lights, before a roundabout, before enhanced striping? So how do they determine that? Because if you shorten those distances, could you save some parking spots?
So in this particular instance, the reason why this starts so far back all the way down to the church and really right out by here is because of the way that lane splits, because you're putting the second lane in. So you have to have the stacked lane. So it's that turn lane right there, that stacking, that's gonna add you probably 10 cars. So if you shorten that, you have less cars, you have a stoplight, you back traffic up more. So it's all designed to flow traffic better. So the bigger that this turn lane is on either side, the faster the traffic will flow.
Except during July and August.
And I will preface this again, July and August, nothing is gonna help this place.
But, 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 and Brian, you're right. This traffic is flowing, unless I'm wrong, this traffic is flowing out of town and down, down past the dunks. So this is queuing traffic to leave town. It's queuing traffic to turn left to go down past the Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, the signal is both ways. It's also queuing traffic that's coming into town.
But, but Brian, you were asking, I think you were asking about the congregational church traffic. Coming into town, stacking lane coming into town in July and August, there might be nothing that works here, because pedestrians do what they do.
Correct.
But if I remember, and I don't know precisely, I mean, there was, there was some, there was some queuing theory used to determine how many traffic, how many cars come through here, what's the right amount of cars to have in the queue in order to move the traffic efficiently. That would be a question for DOT to say, "Show me the math that did that," because I think they did.
They did, and they do have it. I don't have it here with me. I didn't, I didn't bring that with me. But that was all stuff that you can go back through and look at the presentations, and that is all in there.
So you can go onto the website and get that there.
The difficulty, again, my, when I looked at this one, and Linda, you were there too, and we looked in drag, and you were there too. And you were, when we all looked at this one, my vivid memory was from the congregational church moving out. We're just moving, we're just putting more cars in the street. And, and that means the grass plot and all of it, you're just, people and cars are getting closer and closer to each other. And it wasn't clear that that's gonna create a solution to the character of Wolfboro that made Wolfboro what we are.
And I also, coming down into the light coming from the south, depending upon how long that stacking lane is, how far that will back up South Main Street.
I think they back them up to the Children's Center.
You know, yeah. Right now, I mean, and it flows right away, this is gonna stop it for a period of time, and North Main Street backs up easily.
Where, from my perspective, where this is a beneficial to anybody is the people that are coming up Center Street that wanna turn left. This is, this benefits them, because they will have a set time that they'll have to wait before they can, before they have to turn. But short of that, it will slow down the flow everywhere else. Because, I mean, that's how, it has to slow down the flow everywhere else in order for Center Street to be able to move.
And again, I'm not, my eyes aren't great. We're creating more lanes of, more lanes coming into that intersection, right? Coming from the Children's Center Inn?
Again, this has a turn lane as well. I mean, there's kind of one there now. That's like three cars, three cars in front of Three Sisters Store, that's about the extent of it. So this does stack it back. It would, I didn't measure it, but I'm gonna say it's about the same, so it's probably.
It's down to the Children's Center.
Yes, down towards the Children's Center, so.
Because that was part of a conversation that says, "Okay, so we have crossings down there, this whole mid-block crossing and the blinky lights," and that all started to come into conversation in front of the Children's Center as well. Okay, got it.
I mean, lights are designed to move blocks of cars at once. So you're gonna stack up, you know, 20 cars, 20, 30 cars here, before the light turns green, everybody's gonna go. And you're gonna stack up 20, 30 cars here, and light's gonna turn green, and everybody goes. That's, it's, it's go-stop. I mean, that's green and red.
So we have a case study happening right now through downtown with the heavy equipment going, and them stopping cars in one direction, and them stopping cars in the other direction.
And we have one lane of traffic, which is important for us to think about when we look at the corridor, on whether we wanna maintain two lanes of traffic at all times, or can we live with what we have down?
Correct.
Well, tough luck.
I can live with it, because I come in the other way.
I'll just stay home.
So in terms of traffic, we're adding turn lanes. No, we can't solve the summer pedestrian. We have more defined crossings, and that's at that corner.
Yep. Yes, they are much better set up than where they are now, mostly due to this right here. I think we back up a line. The entrance to this Brewster House will be, have to get moved, and they will come out on Academy Street. And what that will do is connect this crosswalk. That will be much more defined. And then you have just a better crossing there, because you'd be crossing with the lights. And the lights versus now, when they cross, it's look and run.
So for pedestrian traffic, I'm gonna say something across the board again. When I asked Chief Warren and Captain Livy at a meeting, "Has there been a lot of serious car accidents, bike accidents, pedestrians hit at Pickering Corner?" Captain Livy actually said, "In the whole time I've been here, I've never been called to a serious issue at that intersection." Where a pedestrian was hit and seriously injured, or a bike hit, hit and seriously injured, or a bad motor vehicle car accident at that corner.
I know there was a kid at Brewster that got hit at that intersection. I would agree with you. There has not been a lot of accidents. We make it work. Is kinda where we are. I can make that same comment about Pleasant Valley Road coming in Route 28.
So if we, if we say that it's a safer passage for people, does that mean one in 20 years?
Well, I think we're talking about it, you have more defined crosswalks that are easier to get yourself across. With a light that allows you to go across.
I think the issue that has been a chronic out there has been the lighting of that intersection. And this is something that Rob Hausman actually brought forward, is, you know, that intersection is a scrum right now. Cars are coming in helter-skelter, there's diagonal crossing, there's no defined things. And the lighting over that intersection hasn't caused anyone to be struck, hasn't caused a collision, at least not that I'm aware of. But the, but this idea of having a traffic light there does improve things, because it starts, it stops, it's well-lit, and you can define your, your crosswalks. So there may be some, I wouldn't say benefit, there may be some clarity in terms of how to use that intersection for pedestrians. Doesn't mean it's the right thing to necessarily do.
Well, it's, we're trying to get what's plus and minus, though we're not.
Better lighting.
Better lighting.
I guess what Paul's saying is that for the minimum build on that, if we did increased lighting and better marked crosswalks, maybe shifted the crosswalks into different locations potentially.
We can do that when we get to that. Let's go down and try to stay at what we're, we're at. And so what we're saying is there's more clarity, better lighting for pedestrians.
Yep. In the, in the present case, if you, if you think about a traffic, to Steve's point, traffic right now is queued from the south going up into the intersection is a queue. Traffic is flowing very actively down towards Dunkin' Donuts from the intersection while traffic is queued. There has been, what I would, because I saw it a year ago. There has been students bolting between the queued traffic and the flowing traffic, and, you know, near misses and those kinds of things happen. That's an irrational way in which students cross, but they do that. So having more of a definition of moving the traffic, both lanes would be moving at the same time. We discourage people from bugging out and coming down there. But I think the big aha for this, Linda, is better lighting of that intersection, which has always been a huge concern.
Better layered and clarity in terms of crossing.
Like right now, if you walk out there, it's tough to see where you are.
And people also always bolt across our crosswalks in downtown, too.
But these, what I'm saying, Brian, is people are coming across between queued cars. They're coming out, they're not going across crosswalks, they're, they're crossing between queued cars.
So we think that there are some trees that'll need to be taken out.
So my best estimate on that is there'll be some trees, but it'll be, it'll, should be a, some tree removal and some tree trimming. Nothing as drastic because of the width.
Nothing major.
Nothing major.
And the utility poles, and I'm going to go, it looks like this is one of the places, it says Pickering Corner. Pole line to cross back to the east side of South Main at a pole location in front of Three Sisters. So. That would have to be there regardless of what these options that we do.
Yeah, I don't, that wouldn't change, I don't believe. I mean, maybe the placement a little bit, but other than that, it would, should stay the way the plan is.
So it'll stay the same.
Did this, does this traffic light scenario affect the delivery truck? I forget, I forget which, the Three Sisters was very concerned about delivery trucks in and out. Is this the one that?
Is this one of them? Yes.
Causes traffic into Three Sisters substantially changed? Right now, I can, I can get into Three Sisters by hanging a left at the top of the intersection.
And you won't be able to do that anymore. It's not, it's not designed to do that anymore.
That's right. So you'd have to, you'd have to go.
It is, I mean, there's no curb. The curb stops there. So the curb cut for the entrance is, is still there. But it's not designed to run across the, you know, the two lanes of traffic.
So you'd have to go up, hang a left, turn around, come back in and go down. That's one, that's one issue. But the second issue was delivery trucks.
Absolutely. These would cause problems to the delivery trucks on either one of them.
And I think the present method of operation is the delivery trucks back in from, they back in from Center Street, don't they?
They use the sidewalk.
They use the sidewalk mostly. So delivery into these gas stations is going to be impacted no matter what. So the coming over the sidewalk and things, which is what the majority of people do at Three Sisters, myself included, because that's rounded over like that, kinda for a reason, I guess. That, that will be more defined, the curb cuts will be more defined, and the sidewalks will be more defined on all of the versions. Which means those, that aspect of those stuff will have to change. No way around that. It won't, I mean, it's not gonna stop the delivery trucks. They just will have to do it differently.
But I thought you said on the stoplight that it was pushing the road in closer to those gas stations. And if that's the case.
Yes.
You're giving them less room to get their delivery trucks.
Yes, on that aspect, correct. I was just talking about, as we were talking about the entrances. But very much so on the corner store, you can see, if you look at these close up, you can see where it was versus where it is. And they lose a fair amount.
That's a real negative here. The sidewalk really isn't changed other than that one area in front of.
Right here, the Pavilion where it bumps out. It bumps out in front of the Pavilion.
Pavilion.
And that's where.
We lose parking space in front of the Pavilion, right?
Correct. That's where the, the parking spots, we do lose.
So parking spaces resume, if you will. Yeah, well, on, on the, on the other side of the crosswalk at Carpenter, so like out in front here.
Here.
Yeah, they would, they would resume in front of Town Hall. That's about it, three or four parking spaces.
So we are gonna lose, like I said, we're gonna lose 11.
11.
We're gonna lose two on the inbound, in-town side, which is the ones right in front of the Pavilion.
Pickering House.
In the Pickering House where that sidewalk jumps out. And the reason that jumps out like that is to steer the traffic away from the corner to make the swing.
Yep.
And we lose everything on this side in front of the church, because the whole road shifts towards the bay.
And again, my, my memory of this is, is, you know, for me, is that what we want? We want three lanes of traffic, two going out, one going in, active in that corridor, which is gonna be prone to stopping anyway.
And I don't know, Linda, I'd like to throw this out as we're doing this. The, the signal and the enhanced striping are very, very similar.
Yes.
So a lot of what we're discussing pertains to the enhanced striping as well, just for, the only real difference is there isn't signals there.
Steve, what's the question mark around the monument?
There isn't any signals on the enhanced striping, but the road layout.
But the road layout's the same.
Is almost the same.
So the road is the same.
So couldn't you shorten that, those lanes on the enhanced striping?
Well, that goes back to the same thing we said here. It's stacking. In theory, you can, but you're not gonna, you don't have the car storage for the turn lanes. That's why they are extended out as far as they are versus this option, say like the roundabout, because you have cars actually stop. And when you have cars stopped, you need place for them to stop at. So that's the turn lanes for stacking. You just don't, that's why it's, goes all the way back down.
But you can compromise, you just make those lanes shorter. Yeah, you have more of a backup, but.
You can, but it's.
Queuing theory.
But then you had to block.
It doesn't work. I mean, you, you can do anything you want to, but you're gonna have, you cut it down to two, three cars, block the whole road at that point.
Steve, a question on the monument. You have a question mark next to the monument being moved in the traffic light.
Yes.
But then when you get to enhanced striping, you don't. And then a minute or two ago, you said they're basically the same thing, so what's, what's the difference?
Because I couldn't make out well enough on the print whether or not that has to move or not. And I couldn't find it in the notes.
Just a general question.
That's a general question that I can't answer, which is why there's a question mark, and I should have put one under the enhanced striping.
I think, again, my memories, my memory's not good, but I think the only scenario where the monument was gonna move was gonna be the compact roundabout.
That's what I thought, too.
That's what I, I, the three of us are in agreement.
And that was my recollection as well, except for when I looked at the plan.
Okay.
It was close. And it was close enough that I didn't want to come here and say, nope, we're fine with that, that's a, I'm not 100% sure on that.
Okay.
You know, again, my memory's like mushy, but I think the only one that was the monument, because we were going to push the roundabout outside of it, towards the monument, push that back. But at that time, what's, at that time, there was also a bid on the table to potentially move the house.
Well, that was because it was...
That was taken off the table, right?
Because it was not, not the compact roundabout. At that time, I think we were looking what they called the mini roundabout.
Correct.
And it pushed us, that we had to deal with the house, we had to deal with the field.
But the house, but the field, my memory, was the field remained untouched, we were just going to move the, I had to move it? I got it, okay, I got it.
It had to level out in that corner.
Uh, okay.
Still out into the field in that corner.
It would, okay. And that's why the house had to move, because originally, they wanted, Brewster was thinking about terminating their entrance, their drive right into the roundabout, right?
Yes, that's correct.
In every scenario now, that driveway goes away, and they go out.
Come out onto Academy Drive.
Academy Drive, don't go out there. Which is not an easy place to go out of anyhow.
No. Right.
I wouldn't, okay. Anything else, more on the traffic light? All right, the next one is enhanced striping, and we're saying the roadway is the same?
Everything is pretty much the same. The crosswalks are in the same positions, the road layout, the stacking, the lane shifts, all of that is, is the same, just doesn't have the lights.
And so it's not as safe for the pedestrians?
Well, it says safer, my only issue on that is I remember vividly that the lighting solution with the traffic light made the pedestrian crossing easier. If we're doing enhanced striping, we'd have to ask the question, what happens to the lighting in that intersection?
Well, the reason on the traffic light is you had a button to push.
No, exactly. And that made it easier for the students to know where to go. But if you, if you're only going to do enhanced striping and no traffic light, and no lighting system, what are you going to do in that intersection?
Well, the reason why I have safer passage for them is because it is still better defined than what is there now.
You painted a stripe on the ground.
I'm sorry?
A stripe has been painted on the ground.
Correct. But you'd also have more signage, the curb cuts would be more defined than they are now. That's why anything is safer than what is there now.
Stipulated.
So in this whole thing, and I know it's very subjective, but we don't consider the appearance of how the final project is going to look, because you're going to have a different appearance of that intersection when it's underneath a traffic light, it's underneath enhanced striping, it's underneath a compact roundabout, or if it remains as is. Again, that's very subjective, but some people may think, hmm, big towers of streetlights that have to be tall enough to allow cranes and logging trucks and things to go through are going to be, maybe not an eyesore, but very apparent. They're going to be there, you're not going to look through them.
So as far as heights go, that's, that's a standard run, it's no different than Jeremy's power lines. Those are at a, you know, you have to have 13.6, so it's not, and I believe DOT puts their lights at 15-ish, give or take. So that's a standard, that's not, you know...
I'm just saying, they are going to be big towers, they're not going to be little poles on the side of the road.
No, they're going to be towers, they're not going to be a...
They're going to be towers that would, that go across and...
How about we add character of town? Isn't that what you're talking about?
I didn't, I could not think of the right term to put there.
You want to say character of town?
Historic appearance.
Why should we do character of town? And we can say it, because I think that's what you're, you're talking about. What, as we drive in and looking at downtown, what is it?
Visual appeal.
Visual appeal's a good one.
Okay, you want visual appeal?
Hey, Paul, that was...
What do you think, Dave? How's it going, huh?
I knew you'd come up with that.
Thank you, Dave.
One for Paul.
Jim's over there rolling his eyes, going on, geez. No, I think, but I think it's a valid, Brian makes a valid point. What's this all going to look like when it's done? If it looks really efficient, if we all go, it's really efficient, but it looks like poop, that's a, that's a bad model.
So if we go to the traffic light, the visual appear four?
Well, it depends unless you love traffic lights.
Well, I mean, I put four. I mean, because you're going to have big metal poles, lights, and so...
Other than a state road, I can't, I can't think, and I don't want anybody to, I can't think of a traffic light in any town other than a state road between, between here and, here and the border. I can't think of any. North going northbound, I can't think of any. So we would be among firsts.
No, it's a state road.
A state road.
But this is a state road.
Yeah, this is a state road.
It's a state road, Paul, so...
But we would be among firsts, having this buried in the middle of our town.
Conway, Mollinborough.
See, I told them not to do this.
Meredith.
I will say, we would look a little bit like Meredith.
Okay.
And Meredith doubled their width of their lanes, doubled the number of lanes, put up lights, made a roundabout, and it all still is congested two miles each direction.
Okay, so we, we, I'm putting down poor for visual appeal. Anybody have a problem with that?
Oh.
All right, enhanced striping. And I think the enhanced striping has a better visual appeal.
Well, it depends on what you're looking at.
You want to do, you want to do numbers like one through three, and we can do that, instead of poor, we can grade it that way, and three being the worst and one being the...
What, three being poor and two being...
Yeah.
Okay, so three being poor, two being...
Just remind me never to ask a question about traffic lights, okay?
And one being preferred.
Preferred, yes.
Okay, so one's preferred, two's okay, three's poor. So I'll change that poor to a three.
And I think the visual appeal of striping, with the exception of a traffic light, it's the same thing. If you're looking straight at the road, if you're standing in the front of the Pickering House, if you're standing in the front of the Congregational Church, doesn't matter whether it's September 18th or July 38th, that's going to look like a lot of blacktop.
It will be more blacktop than a minimum build, that's for sure.
A lot of blacktop.
So give me, give me one, two, or three?
Three.
I would say two. I would say that compact roundabout might be two or three. I would say enhanced striping would be a two, and in my opinion, the minimum build would be a one, because it is what we have.
Brad? You're coming down, I'm not looking at any of that.
Brad, speak up, I forgot.
I have no, I have all this noise.
Okay, are we doing these one at a time?
Is David...
We did, yes. Give me the traffic light.
Three, three, one through four or one through three?
One through three.
Three being the ugliest?
Yes.
Three.
There you go, Brad.
Dave?
One, two, or three, what's the worst?
Three.
Three.
So we're all agreed, three, okay. Enhanced striping, and Paul's talking about all this...
Blacktop.
He's all...
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three.
I'll go with three. So I have two twos and three, three.
That's 2.75.
We haven't even started picking on those electric poles that are going to look like thumbs.
Well, those electric poles, it's going to go, we know that they're going to go, it's going to cross back to the east side of South Main Street at this corner, just from the sheet that's here. Okay, shall we go on to the roundabout, Steve?
We're going to lose two spaces, the ones in front of the pavilion, Pickering House, right there. None of the construction will start until up on the south end of Carpenter there, so we're not going to lose anything in front of the church. It really has the least amount of impact as far as traffic goes, with the exception of, no, that's it. Flow in, flow out, it is designed to keep traffic moving. As we all know, and prefaces again, what happens down here is, we'll back up into the circle no matter how you slice it. But for 10 months a year, it is designed to keep traffic flowing in and out. It actually, the gas stations gain space. There is, you're not going to be able to come up Center Street and bang a left into Three Sisters. You'll have to go around the loop and double back around again. That's, you know, you'll be able to come around here and then come into Three Sisters this way.
Steve, how many lanes are coming up from the south on Center Street?
So it's only one, so we don't have the width. So as far as the blacktop, it's one in, one out. So as you come around, you come up, and you either go this way or you go downtown. Once you're in the circle, you just continue around. Same thing, you come up by Three Sisters from, from the high school, if you're heading north, and then you come in and you can bang a right and go down Center Street, or you head downtown. And it is designed, if anybody's ever been through a roundabout, as you keep moving. That is the theory.
And you can drive over it.
And you can, yes, you can drive over. Well, no, it's...
Well, you can, if you're a fire truck.
No, it's designed for larger trucks, tractor-trailer trucks, logging trucks, equipment movers, these are all designed for this. This is what you see.
So they drive over.
Yes, to drive over.
Logging trucks, buses.
That's right, so in terms of traffic, we need to know that the trucks can drive over.
So in all three scenarios, if there is a blocking of the box, if there's a blocking of the intersection, everything stops.
Correct, correct.
So there's going to have to be a little discipline there. In a roundabout situation, in the worst case, you have traffic coming to the north that wants to go downtown, that clogs the roundabout, unless they block the box. If they don't block the box, people will just go around in a circle and go someplace else.
Isn't that what's great about a roundabout?
Yeah.
You don't know where you need to turn.
Well, there you go. You could do it for days, you could do it for days on end, it's a fun thing.
Look, kids, Big Ben.
How about four buses, school buses, going into it at the same time, going in different directions? And they're driving right through the center of it, one going right, then another one going straight, then one going left, then one going right.
So, Brian, it's not that tight. It's not that tight. So a school bus going around this, maybe a rear tire might go up on that curb. It's more, tractor-trailer's the same thing, rear tires might cut that corner, but on a, nine times out of 10, any bus or anything going across, that's not going to have an issue.
It could be argued that you can't design things for the, for the 1% scenario.
Correct.
You have to design things for 99% scenario.
You know, and if traffic is flowing downtown this way, it won't clog up. We back up, if we back up down here and they start to back all the way up, that'll slow it down.
So in all of those, if there's a block to box, you can't go anywhere?
There's nothing I do.
I think, I think that's the question, can we get to the point where that traffic circle gets gridlocked?
I can foresee it.
That's what I hear.
The only time I can foresee that would be if something is drastic happening downtown. Now, even now, in the summertime, they're not backing up out here. During the construction, they did, but even still, to back all the way up to that intersection going that way, it does happen, but it doesn't happen that much and that often. And if it does, it blocks it now. So it's not going to be any different, in my opinion, it's not going to be any different when it's bad, it's just going to be bad.
Well, in, in Steve's point, if you had traffic congestion to the Pickering Corner, in any one of those scenarios, you could bug out and go southbound on Center Street.
Correct.
As long as no one blocks the box.
And again, because of the way this goes, if you have traffic backing up into, sorry, backing up into here, in order to mess that up, you, they would have to literally back all the way through the circle.
They'd have to block the box.
And that happens a lot. There, right now, there is traffic from downtown that backs up all the way to the hospital during the summer on a regular basis. And then when you're blocked up in a roundabout, you don't have the ability to go around each other, maneuver and engine wiggle.
But you shouldn't do that anyway. That's half the problem there is now, is people try to make a lane when there isn't a lane, and you try to go where you shouldn't go, instead of staying in a lane and just driving.
So unfortunately, I have to trust my niece, who has a doctorate degree in municipal planning and traffic study, who works down in Rhode Island right now. And I showed her all these projects, and she told me that roundabout in that location does not make any sense. That's just what I've got, and I have to trust her. She showed me 14 different reasons why, and I have to go with it.
So that's where you're going to be on it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I saw an expert.
So is there anything else on that compact roundabout that we should discuss? The, the crosswalks are fine, they're down further on Center Street, as I recall.
So there, on the roundabout, there's a crosswalk here, here, and here. And in both, in, or, excuse me, in all three of these, there's a, you get a bit of a waiting lot, waiting spot in the middle.
There is.
There is, so in these proposed islands, for lack of a better word, there is a spot they can stop. So if they can only get across one lane, you can stand there for a minute while you work your way across. And this is the only option that has that. But you still have the three, you still have three crossings in this intersection, just like you have in the, in the rest of them.
And electric infrastructure, what's the deal with that?
So that, and the roundabout will stay exactly how we had it planned originally. And all of these plans, actually, for that matter.
And the thing with the, with the safety for the crosswalks has been my, one of my biggest things that I like about them is the safety that Steve just explained.
Yep.
Is there's that station in, in the middle on each of those islands there, so a person crossing only has to worry about crossing one lane of traffic at a time, whereas all the other ones, you're talking about three lanes of traffic, they got to maneuver through. Once they commit to it, they're out there with, you know, watching cars coming at them from all directions.
Not following your back.
So I really like the, the roundabout for that, that safety feature right there is one of the biggest selling points for me, anyway.
Brad, I didn't, I didn't follow all of that, try it again, please.
When you, when a person's going to cross there with a roundabout, they only have to cross one lane of traffic, then they're in that little island, it's in between.
Oh, you're saying someone's going to walk into the round, the actual island itself?
No, no, this is right here. There's little islands.
There's little islands as the lanes split.
Each of those roads that feed into the, into the roundabout.
Oh, oh, okay, bump, they're bumpouts. They're bumpouts. When you said islands, okay, they're bumpouts, I got it, okay.
It's a staging area that...
It's a staging area for stuff, I got it, okay.
But they're not, they're not curved, they're just painted on the ground.
No, they're curved.
They're curved. Those are curved.
They're curved.
So then how does a big truck get around?
Because it's not, it has to go around the whole circle, they just have to get lined up with that next lane to go through there.
I apologize, Brad, when, when you said island, I was like, what are we talking? But if you're saying it's a, there's bump, there's bumpouts all around those things, so they can queue up and cross.
They only cross one lane of traffic on that.
That's right.
Steve?
So these islands in this, that are in the center of the two bumpouts, that are in the center of, of these lanes, Brian, is what pushes the vehicles wide enough to come around the circle in the first place.
What are the size of them, dimensions?
I have no idea.
What's the dimensions?
Three feet by eight.
You made that up.
Yes, I did.
Does he know?
You wanted something.
You wanted something, I gave you, it's three feet wide, eight feet long.
I think they're only one and a half foot by four, and only three people can stand on them.
Okay.
I don't know.
So you know the answer. I, I, so...
That'd be a good question if you'd ask.
It is. I just asked it.
The, the one thing I'd like to point out with this, this is the only one that affects the monument, and the monument would need to be moved for this roundabout.
Yes.
And there was a comment made by a member of the public, um, 'cause we may have an immovable object issue, but that monument can't be moved. So we, we just have to make sure we suss that out, right?
I don't have an answer for that.
Someone came to the microphone. I was, I was watching it on TV. Someone came to the microphone and said, "You can't move the monument," which is, it's an immovable object. So we just have to know whether that's true or not.
They did the historical survey.
They did. Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Just wanna check the box, you know? I wanna get one of those, check the box, pencil down.
That, as Jim alluded to, that's all part of the historical survey and all the things that DOT is working on right now to make sure all their ducks are in a row.
But we do have to, we do have an encroachment on the, on the field?
It's minimal. I don't have the dimensions, but it is minimal.
It does come in there, but it's not on the field. It's up in the upper landing.
Upper corner.
It's before it takes-
Before it goes down into the soccer field.
Yes, that kind of upper space there that it's going to be.
Or whatever the-
And we also gain space for deliveries to the gas stations.
This is the most pro-gas station, um, design that I would call.
Well, there you go.
Because it pushes the curbs, because it tightens this up, because it's only one lane now. Versus all the other two have two lanes come up Center Street, and then obviously two lanes coming this way. There's only one. So it actually, they gain space in there, both of their parking lots.
So this one will also have a less of an impact on the real estate, the pavilion, and the Pickering.
You still lose, correct. You're still gonna lose the two spaces here, no matter how you slice it, you're losing those.
On the Pickering side.
The Pickering side, but you're not losing anything. You're not losing anything on the church side, and you're, and again, the construction's gonna start here versus down here on all the others.
So coming up 28-
The area has more parking for those establishments.
Coming up 28, it's just as easy to get into Three Sisters as it is now.
Coming up 20- From dunks? No, you have to go around the roundabout to get into Three Sisters.
Okay. And that, that, your one foot by three foot island that you walk across, is there going to be room for a car to go around past that and then make their left into?
No, Brian, you have to go around the roundabout.
That's what I said. So they go around the roundabout, and then, and then they'll go past that little island, and then they'll be able to take a left into-
So you come up Center Street, you go around the roundabout, you go back down Center Street, and you bang a left into Three, or right, excuse me, into Three Sisters.
There's gonna be a lot of people that aren't gonna bother.
You're not gonna come, you could, yes, you could go around and bang a left in here, 'cause that will stop.
Okay. So it, it, that won't be in the way of getting into the other entrance? Okay, that's what I was asking.
It, to me, logically, if you come around this way, you have free access. You come here, you're gonna have to stack up traffic to turn in.
Yeah, you'd have to queue up if traffic was stacked.
Correct.
So people going in and out of the gas stations, 'cause there is a lot of times when I go into those gas stations and there's not, not a lot of room, are people gonna get stuck backed out into the roundabout?
Well, again, some of this is learn how to drive a little bit. I mean, that's probably not the nicest thing to say, but I mean, you can't- That's the 1%, is, there's not, you, there's no 100% situation for everybody to drive and park everywhere they wanna go.
When you come out of a gas station with a roundabout, no matter what gas station you're coming out of, you're gonna have to turn right.
Yep.
No matter where you come out, you have to turn right.
Bingo.
I'm thinking about the ones going in if it's backed up, and then they're half in the roundabout and trying to get in and waiting, and so. And the, the other question that I was gonna ask before we started talking about this is, for you, which of these options is easiest for plowing?
We don't plow any of this. The only thing we, state plows all of this. The only thing we, we plow the sidewalks.
Well, I shouldn't have asked the question about the stoplight, all right? So just, just take that off the table.
From the state's point of view, does the state care which way they plow?
So, I, I don't know. So there's two different things there. You have the DOT maintenance shed out here. I'll tell you, if I was plowing this personally, I don't wanna plow that, but I'm not the one that has to plow it.
You don't, you wouldn't wanna plow which one?
Roundabout. But again, it's not, that's not my-
I can see them blowing a lot of snow into the two gas stations as they go around in circles.
It's no different than what goes in there now.
I would just find us, we're trying to get through the matrix, Brian.
Yep.
Been here a while, working on it, and we've got a long list to go on.
Okay, so, so was anything else on the, uh, roundabout? All right, so we need to give it a mark.
Two.
One is preferred, two's okay, three's poor. Brian?
Three.
Okay. Paul? Brad?
One.
Dave? I'll give it a two.
Dave, you still don't like it? Well, everybody's, nobody's perfect.
Okay, so now we gotta go on to the mini build. Um, the mini build-
Minimum build.
Minimum, that's right. Minimum build. We, um, we lose two parking spaces?
Yep.
Yes.
And, and all of these, this lane shift here is what drops out those spaces, these two right here. Every option we have loses those two spaces.
The Pickering side.
Yes, the Pickering side. And that's all based to lane, to do the shift over, to, to do the dedicated turn lane here, so all the lanes line up.
So again, just to make sure we're all clear, so the, the parking in front of the Pickering House, no matter what scenario other than the do-nothing, no matter what scenario is selected, Pickering House is losing parking in front of its facility.
Not in front of the Pickering House. It's a, in front of the real estate.
Real estate.
In front of the, I'm sorry.
K W real estate.
Just wanna make sure I'm clear. In front of the, uh, real estate.
Yep.
Okay. So Pickering House would be unaffected in this scenario, in the minimum build?
Correct.
Same with the roundabout.
Same with the roundabout.
No monument movement.
Let me just go down, 'cause that's part of what's taking us. We're jumping all over, and then-
Apologize.
So, uh, we got the gas station impact, um, and you're saying, I got here, you said decreased space. Is that on both sides or just on one?
That's on both. So, again, it pushes, because of the turn lane here, and the way you have to flare out things through here, it pushes both of those, the entrance, and Exodus Center Street is wider, so it cuts into that corner, in this corner of the gas station.
So they lose that. So, um, we did the businesses. There's no impact to the church. There's no impact to the field. There's no impact to the monument. Uh, any traffic emits the same. Everything kinda stays the same in terms of the traffic. We haven't changed anything.
Correct, with the exception, as we said, of, of this entrance to the Brewster House.
Yeah, but that really isn't on the main traveling.
Correct.
So I would say the traffic stays the same. Pedest- pedestrians, do we pick up any sidewalks or it's the same crossing?
Same crossings.
Why is it safer?
Because they're more defined, and they are proposing more. They're proposing another crossing light. Uh, I think that's probably just missing off of this. And again, I'll go back to saying, anything that we do to improve this intersection is what makes it safer for the pedestrians.
Let me just make sure I heard you. They're, they're proposing improved lighting?
They've got the blinker lights, the crossing lights.
So we're having crossing lights.
Rapid flashing beacons.
Correct.
Um, now, this will get the wind down on Center Street. Are, will they be ours to maintain?
They'll, yes, they're gonna end up being ours to maintain. That's, like the two we have now are ours to maintain.
So, so that adds a cost.
Correct.
So we have additional costs for the, um-
Yes.
Flashers. Doesn't do anything for the lighting. All right, um, let's have, uh-
You said it doesn't do anything for the lighting?
No, we're not changing any light.
Well, we're getting rapid flashing beacons.
But that's one there, and one there, that doesn't do any light for the intersection.
In the intersection.
It doesn't do anything for the crosswalk down the way.
I got it. I got it. Okay, thank you. Yep, I got it.
All righty, um, I'll start with Dave. How do you rank it?
One.
Okay, Brad?
I'm gonna go a three on this one.
Um-
You don't like the way it looks now?
I'll do a two.
Three.
Paul?
Anything one, it's the same way it is.
That's a big surprise. Okay. Anything else on this intersection? Let's go to McManus, 'cause I think that will be a quicker one for us to get through, um, on the back.
No, I just wanted to get the lint off.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had lint on it.
Cookie crumbs.
Okay. Let's do the minimum b- build. Where's that one? That's-
That is the truth. I'm telling the truth.
Right to the right. I can't read my things in my glasses and look at that at the same time. Min- minimum build is right there.
Okay, minimum build's right there. All righty. Um, traffic. I think there is a change, there's a change at Pleasant Valley, because that's part of this whole-
Yes.
And that one has less of a, um, green space on the east side, and a larger, looks like, on the west side, which is where I thought they might put a retention basin.
Like-
I think that's it, or maybe it's the same size, but definitely-
I think it's, uh, it's, um, it is a little different. This one comes up a little higher than these came down, because they brought this driveway straight out.
Yep.
And this one goes into that section of the road. So that's the biggest difference between these two, is really just how Pleasant Valley Road comes out to, um, back out to 28.
So, um, this is new to me. So the, so the present method coming out of Pleasant Valley is you're, you're just merging.
Yield.
Correct.
You're merging, right. You're yielding and merging. All of these scenarios are so, are suggesting a stop and go.
Correct. They want all of them to come out to a, to a tee head on the road.
Would they still keep it the other way?
I'm sorry, the way it is now?
Yeah.
I think they really want to change that. I think from their perspective, it's a safety issue.
You go back to the same thing.
I know.
You know, I guess, this is my feeling. I'd prefer to do away with that, now obviously I drive out there all the time, that tee, and spend the money for retention basins, et cetera, than that.
I think, Linda, what you could do with this easy enough is, you can't do it with this one, and you, you really can't do it with this one, but if you go with the minimum build, I don't see why you can't extend this rate, just like it always was. The mouth of this road is quite wide.
Yeah.
Maybe choke that down a little bit.
Yep.
To create that green space that you're looking at, and then the driveways still come out like they always have, and-
Now, that scenario that you have there, in addition to, you know, stop and go, that scenario is also a stop and turn coming into Pleasant Valley Road.
Correct.
You were saying if we could change it, so it was not, it was a, not a stop and go that you could make it yield on.
Yeah, 'cause you're just introducing another queue.
I am.
Correct.
No, 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 that scenario introduces a brand-new queue coming south Main Street out of town.
Because, yeah, it's not as usual. Like, right now, once you get through, once you get past the entrance to the school, you can look, and if nobody's coming, you, you start to cross over.
Correct.
And we all do it.
Your sightline's pretty good, right?
Correct. Now, with this, you're gonna have to come all the way down, and you're right, Paul, you have to make a dead stop and turn left.
And, and being honest, there's not a lot of people that'll come out Pleasant Valley Road. It's not like the steady stream of-
Well, I think, I think, I think a lot of this was designed, you know, it's designed to come out, you look left and right, and then you make your choices. I think this, I think all three of these was more from the perspective of the people coming this way out, and not so much looking at it from this way in, and-
Linda, what's that street right, uh, I, I forget the name of it.
Right here, this one?
No, 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 no. Uh, coming out of Pleasant Valley Road before you go to the-
Crossroads.
Your off-ramp.
Crossroads.
Crossroads.
Yeah, crossroad. There was a bid, or there was a comment made by a member of the public that said, "Why don't you tee it up there?" And have people turn on, so we're, we're pencils down on that. We're not gonna-
Correct.
If, if you really wanted to do, if you-
Pencils down on that.
If you really wanted to have a tee here, you're better off to do it at crossroads and then just dead-end this.
But the crossroad thing actually doesn't fix anything.
No.
Okay.
This is another one we should ask the police department. How many accidents are at the current intersection? If they haven't had any in the last five years or nothing significant, then if we're changing it for safety, is that bogus or not? Or is it really safer? If there's no accident, how can we make it safer?
Collisions, crashes.
There hasn't been, you know, bend-to-bend, the golf course, you have, get run into if you stop all the time. That's where you're gonna get it.
That's what they do have a bunch of.
That's where they say they have more accidents on 28 than anywhere else. It's the crossing at the golf-
It's because the people at the golf course just cross.
Or you stop and be nice, and the guy-
No, you stop and be nice to somebody who's in the range.
Because you shouldn't stop.
That's right.
The most bend-to-benders are 200 seniors that have been driving for three weeks coming out of the high school all at the same time at the end of the day. I know, 'cause two of my kids were hit by other students from behind. It just happens. There's no way you're gonna fix that either.
No, exactly.
You can have a roundabout, you can have a superhighway, you can have 17 traffic lights. The high school kids are gonna bump into each other.
They are. I agree with you. That's, so that would be one of mine here. My feeling is the, um, mi- minimum build is the one that makes the most sense to me, but let me go down here.
Yeah, we gotta go through each one.
I'm, I'm catching myself, Brian. Um, pedestrian safety, it's more defined.
Where?
That's what he's saying. Looks like they're-
Where is it more defined?
So, again, the crosswalks are, are better defined, uh, in the, um, yeah, sidewalks are better defined all the way up through here than what, 'cause this is still better than what's here now. This is a minimum build.
Sorry, it's pedestrian safety, sorry. I said sidewalks.
Are we gonna have, uh, rapid flashing beacons there?
Right here.
Right there, in front of the high school?
Front of the high school.
But not, but not down at the McManus?
No, it's proposed right here.
We're just gonna have painted crosswalks.
So this is, this one is designed for anybody walking this way, walks up here and crosses.
Right.
All these others have crosswalks, or, I'm sorry, this one has crosswalks everywhere at the circle, very similar to what we talked about out here, plus one up here. This one, they cross here, but they still only cross 28 at the high school.
Go with your question.
Okay, so pedestrian safer is, you got a flasher and somewhat. You got the trees, minimum trimming, utility pole.
Question mark.
Yeah, as, as far as I know, um, again, with all these plans, we only have one engineered plan, so it'll stay the same, regardless of what the outcome is.
The poles here would be 10 feet behind the existing pole line.
Yes.
Correct.
So we're looking at it here, it's going to be back almost to the sidewalk.
But we're still not clear as to whether we're doing them once or twice.
No. So, some. Sidewalks is better defined on the east side.
Yep.
So, on the east side is where we're getting the better-defined sidewalks? And there will be a cost to the town, because we're gonna have that lovely beacon there.
Yep.
Okay. Compact roundabout.
Sorry, I was trying to have them set up something for you.
Okay. A compact roundabout. Oh, so I forgot to get the vote here. Wait a second. I'm moving too fast. All right, um, minimum build. Um, I'll start with Brian this time.
What?
One, two, or three?
For appearance?
For, yes.
For the compact roundabout?
No.
Oh, the minimum build, I would say, is a one, um, for-
Okay, that's it. That's it. Okay, um, Paul?
One.
I'll have a one.
Are we doing appearance or a preference of what, which I would like-
Visual appeal.
Visual appearance is what it was supposed to be for the other ones, too.
I'm gonna go with a two on minimum build.
One, this is a two, one. Uh, Dave?
One.
All righty.
What were you, Linda?
A one.
Here's a one.
All right. Compact roundabout, um, constant movement of traffic, possible issue with, uh, school traffic.
See, I find this to be exactly the opposite of the problem we're trying to solve up here. This thing, uh, this thing works always, kinda, uh, but it's only important during school season. During non-school season, you know, the, the argument was made, I guess, early on, that this is going to meter traffic, to which we heard somebody from either the DOT or, or our town, or our, um, highway guy said, "You can't stop traffic. You could just move it someplace else." So this, this doesn't do, do much value add to what's about to happen down here at Pickering Corner. So I, I don't know what the value add is, period, of this, uh, of this roundabout.
And is it gonna actually, when all the kids get out-
Sorry, Steve, I was a-
When all the kids get out at the same time, until we use it, we don't know if it's going to create more traffic or alleviate traffic?
Oh, I don't know.
It seems like a big expense for a very short period of time.
Yeah, right. It's hypothetical of what we're trying to do. It's backwards.
The, in, for that, again, you get a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours in the afternoon, at best. Out here, it's traffic flow all the time. This, um-
And it's school season.
And, yeah, exactly. It's 180 days a year. So it's not even full-time, full-time, so.
Not in the summer at all.
Right, not in summer at all.
Or weekend.
Not unless we have so much traffic congestion that we have to move all those cars to the parking lot.
According to my niece, she says that roundabouts, part of the, part of the, the, um, idea of roundabouts is on a busy roadway, like 28 going through Osiphe, where people have gotten killed at that intersection, it's to slow traffic down to a manageable speed and to get them through a dangerous area and then out at another location. You don't have something here where people are driving 55 miles an hour when you hit it. They're already going slow. That's the same thing when you go into downtown. Nobody's going through downtown at 55 miles an hour. That's the idea of a ra- of a roundabout, is to take- Fast-moving congestion that can be dangerous and slowing it to a manageable speed.
So I think that, and, and this is why I was a little confused by the, uh, stop and turn that got, you know, introduced, because originally, when this, again, memory, my memory's mushy. Originally, this was, let's let Lindemari fly out of Pleasant Valley Road, almost at breakneck speed, and then force her to go into a roundabout. and then force her to go into a roundabout.
And see if she could do it.
And see if she could do it.
On how many.
On her Harley Davidson.
On a snowy night. So, it just doesn't make sense. At least to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, let's, let's go on visual appeal and usefulness. I'll start with Brian.
Visual appeal?
Yeah, one, two, or three?
Three.
Okay. Paul?
Three.
I'm a three. Brad? Dave? All right, it's a winner on three. Okay, that one, nobody liked. Enhanced striping, and it says for traffic, dedicated lane. And one of the things that I found when I had to pick up my, drop off my grandson and then get out, the only way that I could turn left was because somebody was stopping to turn in, and it was just because they were, same thing as Pickering Corner, they were nice and courteous. If we do a lane, you're not gonna be able to.
More blacktop.
More black, but you aren't gonna be able to do that, because they're gonna be, have somebody going back. You're only gonna be able to turn right. You're not gonna make a left.
That slip lane that comes down through here is just, these guys would just keep ripping right through, and you'll, you'll have to wait forever to turn left.
Yep.
Well, and again, I think the, the, one concern was, if you introduce another lane, you're gonna have slow traffic and fast traffic, and you're gonna, it could be an invitation for a collision. And the question is, do we, do we have that much volume of traffic out there to warrant this kind of additional blacktop only during the school season?
And you're gonna.
But let's not let them whip through it. Because you, you know, it's like, it's like on any highway, if you have somebody doing 30 miles, 20 miles, 25 miles an hour, and you got stop traffic, that's a ma, that could be a major collision.
So, and you have the same thing down here, so if Linda comes out and she wants to turn left to go to home, you gotta make sure that nobody's coming around the cars, because you can't, these guys are gonna stop. It's the same thing.
We're gonna see a lot of, a lot of skid marks going up, right?
So.
Linda's gonna go across road.
I don't know why.
That's right.
I don't know why we're picking on her so much, but.
Guys are talking about.
And she's gonna get hit on her motorcycle, I'm telling you.
What they've done the last three years now is they have two offices up there at 2:30 in the afternoon.
Yeah.
To let the buses out.
Well, not just that, but to stop traffic, yeah, to let the buses out. But there's one there at McManus, and another one up on the other end by the vocational exit.
Yeah, and.
And it works fine.
Yep, yep, I agree with you.
But for what? 20 minutes? Half hour at the most?
Once, once the buses are gone, they walk back. They are there when the kids, they let the kids run into each other.
So, I think we can ask them if this is a, if this is a hard.
Okay, that would be a good question.
You know, if, if that's a hard yes, we have to do that because we're changing the road now, and we don't like that 60-foot road cut that's there now.
You can, you don't need the 60-foot wide road cut.
No, you don't.
You know, because that way you can kind of drive down and pick where you want, and the line, they tried to make it so that you only could go, go where they didn't put the double yellow.
You know.
They wanna slow you down.
Yeah, I know.
You know, and I don't see why that couldn't get tightened up where it is. You know, it's so wide now, so that even now, if you came up here with a tractor-trailer, you could hook a right and go down Pleasant Valley Road, but also, if you're paying attention, you can go across crossroads, and that's a much easier run. So, again, that goes back to a little bit of just people paying attention.
Okay.
Driving skills, you said.
Driving skills.
All right, this is on the appeal. I'll start with Dave this time.
Which one?
On the enhanced striping, the one we were just talking about.
How do you think it looks driving through it?
That's where you don't, you don't, you put a through lane.
A one's fine.
You like it?
Don't mind it.
Okay, you want a one?
Two.
Two, okay. Brad?
Two.
Linda?
I'm a three. Oh, no, wait a second. No, that's right, because that gives that extra lane. Okay. Paul?
Three.
I'll give it a two.
All righty. Let's go to the corridor.
The corridor.
Linda, I'm not sure, I think you had started on this one, to start at Pleasant Valley Road. If it's okay, could we start it the other way? Only because we have that set up.
Whatever way you wanna take us.
Perfect. Let's start, let's start at Pickering and work down just the same, same way that we just, we had started. And then these guys can set up the other map on this side.
Can I ask you one question, Steve? Maybe, maybe, and maybe you know this. If we were to do the minimum build in one of these two locations, and it costs the state less money, are they still gonna spend the $10 million on this project, or are they only gonna spend what they need to spend?
They're only gonna spend what they need to spend.
So, we couldn't say to them, even though we're doing a minimum build, we want additional curbing, or extend the sidewalk a little bit, or something like that, because we say, hey, listen, you're not widening the road.
Guys, can you come up on this side and leave that last one open for me?
You're not widening the road an extra lane, you're not building islands, you're not building a roundabout. Is there, I mean.
I, I don't have, I don't have the answers for all of that, Brian.
See, because if they don't spend as mu, money, I'd like more retention-based.
Correct. So, it's gonna be, there's only certain things they can spend the money on. They're not gonna spend it on beautification per se, so we're not gonna get lights and trees and that kind of things. We're gonna get, this is for road, for drainage in that.
And sidewalks.
And sidewalks, yeah.
So, I'm just wondering if they would, you know, maybe for, on an opposite side of the road, extend a sidewalk a little bit further, because.
Well, that's, that's a whole different conversation, Brian, because now you're talking about redesigning the road. So, it's not just, as you, we can't just go and add, you know, right now, the sidewalk is supposed to stop at Old Mill, and we can get to that as we get up through there, but it's not like, well, we have another 100 grand, let's go up another 100 feet. They can't just do that, because you need, you gotta plan it, and you gotta have the road width, and you're gonna have all those things. And there is only so much room through that corridor, which is why there's only one sidewalk on one lane going up through there.
Okay.
Okay, so we're starting over here at Pickering Corner, and we're going up to Crescent Lake. And at this point, am I correct, we have sidewalks on both sides? And in front of the sidewalk, there's a green space, and there is, after the green space, a bike lane.
Correct. And over on this page, we have some typical cross-sections, as far as the lane size, the bike lane size, and then where the green space, how the green space is set up and the sidewalk is set.
So, would the minimum build include bike lanes?
So, the minimum builds are only, the, the minimum build conversation is only for the intersections. The corridor is the corridor.
It's gonna be the same?
That's gonna be the same.
Okay.
The only thing that is different is the intersections.
Okay.
But the corridor is not the same, because we get to one spot. I don't believe there's sidewalks on both sides.
No, what I meant, what I meant by the, by the same is, it, it doesn't matter if you do a roundabout in both places. The middle is still, the middle proposal is the middle proposal. That doesn't change once you get out of the intersections.
Okay.
And as you start from here, and you go through, you have some green space on the outbound side, and then you have, your sidewalks are right tight to the lane. And as you get up through here, it actually flip-flops. So, once you get up past, or towards the hospital, you have green space in front of the hospital, between the sidewalk and the curb, and you have no green space between the sidewalk and the curb on this side of the road. By the Clark House, up through the library, and all the way up until where it stops at Old Mill, which is where the sidewalk stops on the southbound lane. The northbound lane will continue all the way up to the high school.
So, and I guess that's the question. Do you like the way it is where the green space is on one side, one lane, and on the other side?
So. How wide is the green space?
You're clo, I can't read it from here. You're closer than I am. So, it's on that page. So, the, the only issue with that is we only have so much footage to play with. So, I don't know, if you wanna add green space to both sides, you gotta lose something. So, you're either gonna lose a bike lane, or you're gonna lose, you gotta lose something in order to make that work.
And state DOT requires bike lanes now?
I believe that was a request from us to put the bike lanes in. That's not of them, that's an us.
This, no, I got it, but, but, but bike lanes, a state, federal, if you get federal money, don't you have to have bike lanes?
I don't know the answer to that. Brian, look at the dot, what's, what's under the dot right there?
Federal money.
Four feet of green space, and it should be, I believe it's five feet of sidewalk, correct? Five and, sweet, six feet.
Here's two, if you put green space, the more areas you put the green space, the further you kick your sidewalk out, and that's gonna kick out your power lines.
Correct.
Correct.
Further too, which is gonna have an impact.
Correct, because then we're, then as we start talking about planting trees along the corridor, we can't plant trees in that four feet of space, because that won't work. So, then you're gonna push them out even further, which then gets underneath their power lines as well, so they'll look good for a few years, and then they'll be kind of tops off.
Yeah.
From the library to Old Mill, that's the only new section they're adding in.
Right, right, right through here.
Same.
What, where it's, where you're gonna see the look difference is, if you drive through there now, you'll notice, especially on this side of the road, the incoming town side, the sidewalk is quite a bit lower than the road. That will, that won't be like that. The sidewalks will be elevated like they should. So, now, when we get heavy rains and the water puddles in the sidewalks and things like that, we won't have that problem anymore.
You won't be swimming on the sidewalk. They're terrible.
Right.
So, on the side that has sidewalks right against, it starts right at the curbing, it's still a four-foot sidewalk, but it starts right at the curbing?
It's, there's six-foot sidewalks continuous up through there. So, you have, you'll have the curb, and you'll have the six-foot sidewalk, then you have green space.
And on the other side, it's.
Four, four foot and then six.
Four, six, and then.
And then the green. So, if I might ask a question. As you guys are picking your layout, and I know the green space between the curb and the sidewalk looks nice.
It doesn't work.
But it, it doesn't really work, because to grow grass in four feet and have it last is iffy. And I can, I could see some benefit, and he can probably speak to it better. But if, if you held it consistent on the curb on both sides, they would have more room to put their power lines on the inside, and you might actually be able to put some trees on the inside then, that wouldn't necessarily grow up under the power. Because by moving the sidewalk, you're moving everything, everything has to go. Whereas if you, if you just sacrifice that four feet of green space, you then could put a tree on the backside of the sidewalk, which then might not interfere with the power lines as much.
Are you moving pedestrians closer to the traffic?
But you move, but you have it on one side of the road already, so I don't know what the difference is. Because you do have the bike lane there. It's not like the traffic is on the white line.
So, the pedestrians are separated from the traffic from, by a bike lane.
Correct. But it's like that on half the road anyway.
I'm just, I'm just trying.
That's my question.
Just trying to visualize what you're saying. So, you're, you're saying is it's, it's, it looks nice for a couple of years to plant trees under the power lines, and then Barry's gonna need to trim them.
Yeah.
Or the, whomever's gonna need to trim them. So.
And if you don't leave that green space, then you'd be able to, and maybe plant trees on.
So.
But you give up, you give up a little bit of safety for a pedestrian, but the offset to that is, there's a bike lane protecting that pedestrian from a hunk of steel hitting them.
Correct. And again, the only reason I bring it up, I bring it up for two reasons. One, half of the road is like that anyway. It's not like.
I got it.
You know, and the other one is, because trees are so important, you, you're starting to run out of room to put stuff, because you, we only have so much space, and we can't really conceptually have everything.
And, and let's be, and let's be honest.
Correct.
Let's be honest, they're not gonna put, you know, six inches or a foot of loom in that area. It's gonna be all gravel from the construction when, when they do it. So, grass isn't gonna grow well there.
No, they'll, they'll do it properly. They'll have the right, I mean, it's to spec, Brian, so everything will be done properly. It's just maintaining that grass is, is the issue. It's gonna have winter kill, it's gonna look, you know, it's a little bit wider, but, I mean, there used to be, there used to be a strip up by the golf course.
It looks perfect. You're not gonna be watering it, there's gonna be mortar mow, and all sorts of stuff.
I mean. Was about a foot, yeah.
Look what happened down here.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Down here in front of hundreds.
Now.
What happened there?
And if somebody hits a curb with their car at 40 miles an hour, they're going four feet over the edge of the road anyways.
So, I, I mean, from a beautification point is where I'm coming from, from that. From a maintenance point for us, I like the sidewalk separated from the road, because as the state plows and they put their, that's a snow storage for them. As it will go now, it will go on the sidewalk on half the road, that we will then have to take care of anyway.
But you have to, you have to maintain that sidewalk anyway.
Yes, Paul, but what I mean by that is, if there's four feet of, if there's four feet of separation in the green space, then I'm not, I don't have to move, I don't have to move the, the snow from 28. If, if the, if the sidewalk is right next to the curb, I've gotta move that snow too with the sidewalk machine.
So, your, your argument is that you're moving incremental snow.
Correct.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
It's a, you know.
And the incremental snow happens to be what a plow just stuck over there for you.
Correct, so, it's, you know, there's.
I like the word splash.
There's, there's a couple different ways to look at that, but, you know, as I've, as I've been going over these plans, and I'm looking at them, and I'm trying to figure out where we're gonna plant the trees and how the trees are gonna work. And that, because I, that's obviously a concern for all of us. So, how that transitions, and I know a lot of it is gonna depend on how the poles lay and the, and the stuff goes, but there's just not that much room there.
So, you're, you're saying it looks prettier, costs you more to, or whatever, yeah, costs you more snow time. The pedestrian safety is, is now separated by a bike lane. But it looks consistent, and you can plant more trees, but you don't have a budget to do that yet, which will get you. But you'd like to plant more stuff. That kind of, and you still have to move your poles.
Yeah.
We still haven't yelled at you yet.
Correct.
So, 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 can we explore that? So, what's the, what's the, other than the potential safety, what's the downside to having one, one walkway all, full length? No downside to that, is there?
And the sidewalks will be made of?
You need to know the numbers.
If there's no, are you talking about?
Yeah. Would we have to wipe out trees?
I guess you need to back up, because I, what I thought you asked for a question, I'll, maybe I was, maybe I'm off. Are you asking if we only have one lane period, or both lanes all the way?
One lane period.
I don't think you can do one lane period.
You can't.
Well, you could, but you have too much.
Then you're gonna have both lanes all the way.
Both sides.
Yeah, both sides. But Linda's saying you gotta take out a bunch of trees in order to accomplish that. By the winddrifter.
Correct. And I'm not entirely sure there's enough room there period to put it in that, which is why it's not designed. The wind drift and all that, because that's fairly close, I don't think there's enough. Well, you'd have to, you'd have to shift too much over towards the, on the golf course side, I think, in order to make that corridor work, because you're adding at least another six to eight feet.
You got a lot of scruffy.
Steve, are they, are the travel lanes on the corridor, we had talked about before, a few years ago, Are the travel lanes in the corridor, we had talked about before, a few years ago, narrowing those down to 11 feet, instead of 12 feet? For, for traffic calming.
I believe-
Travel lane is 11 feet.
11 feet.
Yep.
Shoulder is five on the side.
It's five, what, seven, Brian?
Bike lane.
Bike lane should be five, seven. Shoulders, bike lane.
Five-foot bike lanes.
Which is a breakdown lane too.
Yeah.
The shoulder.
Sidewalks are asphalt, correct?
Correct.
Not going to be those little nice one-by-one cube pavers that I sent you?
No.
So the trade-off, maybe there's no trade-off here. The trade, the, the, the discussion is, we do need wider bike lanes for biker safety. So if you have to do that anyway, you think about it, because Linda's right, I mean, you're, you're sneaking by, somebody on a bicycle. So if you have to do that anyway, what's the implications, or what's your recommendation on what we should do with the sidewalks? Sounds, it sounds like it's-
It interferes with the bike lanes at all, because I'm not tou, I'm not touching the road.
Right. The only thing you're, but your proposal on the sidewalk says that it might not be a bad idea to, to run the sidewalks up, you're going to get a lot more snow splashed on it, but you're going to get it anyway. Isn't, isn't that true?
Yes.
You're going to get it anyway.
We're going to get most of it anyway. It's, again, the only reason I'm suggesting that in this conversation is to look at ways to plant trees. Because you're not going to be able to put them in that four-foot panel.
Bless your heart.
It'd be nice if they could do a double curb, so that you had a wide, or a wide curb, before the asphalt started for the sidewalk, do you know what I mean? Just to pull it right away from the very edge, but-
Against the curb.
Because you're going to have a bike lane, so my, my concern about pedestrian safety is somewhat mitigated, because you have a five-foot bike lane.
Yep. Could I ask one question? What I just recommended, Jeremy, did you have any poles in that four-foot green space? Because if you do, then that's a moot point, that becomes a moot point, is what I said, from what I could tell.
Whereabouts are you talking about by?
Anywhere there's green space, so would be from Pickering Corner to, I'm sorry, from Pickering Corner to, nope, Green Street.
Down to 11.
Crescent Lake Ave would be on the southbound side, and then it would flip from Crescent Lake Ave up to the high school on the northbound side. Because that's the only thing I didn't take into consideration before I made that-
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's some that we have, we're going back four to six feet in that area. There's some, basically getting relocated, relocated behind the sidewalk in some spots. So it's really, you know, until we go, actually go out there and stake these poles out, it's kind of hard to say where-
Because that, obviously that would-
And then, even the trees, they're going to have to come down, for that matter.
Right, mess up what I was, you know, his poles obviously need to be where they need to be.
During construction.
If you wanted to get you to retract something, I don't know, I don't think, oh, I don't want to see that large credit.
You're talking about the, the work up near the furniture?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that was pretty- A similar effort was done down near Barnstead, where they, they were moving the road, but I mean, they went way back.
So, if we go to one little lane of traffic, that would maybe change how we're holding where we have to move it.
Minimize it anyway, yeah.
And could we get some insight as to whether we, you know, it probably would be a seasonal build, right, Steve? I mean, they're not going to be out there digging this stuff up, and, well, no, they may not be able to plant asphalt during the wintertime.
So, they'll go through, they'll do as much as they can where they can, so it depends on how it works, but they'll go most of the year.
So it just made, it made my, made my, my question even worse, because if, if your answer was, yeah, you know, it's going to be a seasonal build, they won't do anything in the wintertime, means they're going to do it all in the summertime.
They're going to be there in the summer.
That's not going to be fun.
It's, it's, I don't believe-
It was nice knowing you.
No, I don't believe they're going to do, like, what we did here, which is shut, shut the contractor down for the summer months.
Okay.
There.
They'll just keep doing it.
Yes.
But, if we go to one lane and we don't have to move electrical poles, we can save time, because we're not shutting down that road to one lane anyways, which is what Barry said, while they move all the poles. So, do we want to shut it down one lane for six months, or one lane for six months? It doesn't matter.
Again, that's just a, it's just an operations math problem for them. I mean, this is going to be a grind thing. They, you know, if you say, here's our preference, they could probably run the numbers and tell you what their, what their construction's-
Yeah, but we're living it, so we get to decide.
Well, we'd like to look at their construction schedule before we decide. So the, so the ask kind of goes like this, if I understand your comment, Linda. The ask is, we don't want, we don't want you cutting this thing back to the lake, alright? We, we, we don't like that idea. We, we, we have an ask on the sidewalks. We want you to recognize that, that this is going to probably be a year-round bill. Come back to us with a build schedule, so that we can have one lane of traffic metered out. Tell us how you do that. That's the, that's the math problem. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, yeah, but that's the math problem, yeah, I agree.
One lane is fine.
One lane.
One lane. Same.
That's the math problem. One lane and not wide. Well, that's another operating constraint, we just don't want them to go wide. One lane, but we also don't want to have, have them, you know, push this thing back wide.
I just want to ask Steve one question. Our lane, our roads are 12-foot wide right now, and they're cutting them down to 11?
Yes.
Are you okay with that?
It's a state road.
Yeah.
That may-
Well, with, and Brad too, using your two expertise, is an 11-foot road wide enough now? Because I know that it can be tight driving down there, when big trucks are coming back and forth, and you're going-
It's, there's, especially you're going to have, great, there's a bike lane, breakdown lane, whatever you want to call it, but you had a five-foot buffer in there. So you're really, you're at 16 feet wide, it's 32-foot wide cut up through there. It's more than big enough.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're making our town roads at 20 feet, even, you know.
Right.
A truck is eight feet wide.
Okay.
Alright, I'm trusting you guys.
Is it wide enough for you to drive recklessly down the road, Linda?
I think so.
Okay, there you go. Pencils down.
Okay.